County Board members, please take your seat. Let's call this meeting to order. It's Tuesday, June 12th, 2012. The time is 6:04.
Will you brighten me up? Look at this, thanks.
This is the whole meeting for Highway Transportation Finance, Justice, Social Services, Policy Personnel Departments and County Facilities. Please turn off or turn down your cell phone to keep Mr. James happy.
Thank you.
And the rest of us also. Roll call, please.
Langenheim.
Here.
Maxwell.
Here.
McGinty.
Here.
Michaels.
Here.
Mitchell.
Here.
Moser.
Here.
O'Connor.
He's here.
Petrie.
Here.
Quisenberry.
Here.
Richards.
Here.
Rosales.
Here.
Schrader.
Here.
Wyble, sorry. Alex.
Here.
Anderson.
Here.
Benzell.
Here.
Burksen.
Here.
Betts.
Here.
Carter.
Here.
Coort. Esri.
Here.
Holderfield.
Here.
James.
Here.
Jay.
Here.
Kipler.
Here.
Kurtz.
Here.
Wyble.
Here. We have a quorum. Ms. Coort was not able to make it tonight to deal with some family medical problems. Seek approval of the minutes for the community to hold for May 15th, 2012. So moved. Move on Mr. Rosales, second by Mr. Carter. Discussion. See none, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Seek approval of the agenda and the addendum.
So moved.
Move on Mr. James, second by Mr. Langenheim. We're moving item 10A1, which is on page three, which is the Reno Dialysis Services Proposal Request. That's not ready for the board yet. Any other changes? See none, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Public participation. If you want to speak, please follow one of these forms in the corner. First up is Shirley Stillinger.
Thank you. My name is Shirley Stillinger and I live in Urbana. I'm here tonight on the behalf of the Champaign County American Civil Liberties Union, which represents more than 700 households in this county. We ask you, slow down. Don't rush. I'm speaking about the jail. Our understanding, which may be wrong, was that your plan is to have the needs assessment report the end of October and to vote in November. We may have wrong information. That is not enough time. In fact, once you get the needs assessment, that's when your work begins. This is not a simple yes or no, build a jail or don't build a jail. I think there are many issues that you need to consider when you make this decision. For instance, what are the plans for the downtown jail? What's going to happen with that building? And that seems to be part of an overall plan with what you're going to do. You might consider whether, instead of building more maximum security jail, you might want to consider minimum security. There are a lot of people sitting in the jail that really pose no threat. They're in on driver's license revocation, they can't make bail. It seems senseless to use the most expensive kind of incarceration to hold these people. The ACLU asks that you keep the public fully informed and involved as you go through this process. And that you consider, when you're making the decision about which consultant to hire, that you consider how they propose to involve the community in this decision. This is a big decision to make and it's not just about the jail. I think it's about the whole system. So I hope you will take time and give it thorough study and involve the community. Thank you.
Standing in front of you tonight, looking back on nearly six months of work around the Champaign County Correctional Systems Administration and Facilities. During this time, with the help of my dedicated and passionate colleagues in the Champaign-Urbana Citizens for Peace and Justice, I've attempted to build a case before this board. The points I have returned to time and time again are easily summarized. One, that the jail space improvement project planning team is openly biased and lacks oversight. And two, that the Community Justice Task Force was slated for marginalization from its inception. While I realize that there are precious few board members who have found my remarks compelling over this time, I feel I must highlight a number of elements of the current crossroads that the board finds itself at, just two weeks before you conduct interviews with the top-ranked respondents of the RFP. First, I would like to note simply that the firms most commonly hired for this type of work are consultancy and project management firms. These are companies which specialize in helping public and private entities materialize their plans in an efficient and effective manner. If the consultant understands that they are to gather information necessary to determine what kind of building project we should undertake, then that is the needs assessment they will do. Keep in mind that although the board will select the firm to do the study, it will be the sheriff's office and the project planning team who will define the day-to-day priorities of the consultant. Without transparency in the communications between county officials and the consultant firm, the sheriff and the planning team will have free rein to collect and display whatever data they like in whatever way they like. Now, I'd like to raise two specific questions in the minds of the board members, and it would be a lot more if I had more than five minutes. First, and most importantly, how will the consultant gather, present, and be accountable for the information they collect on the racial disparity between those incarcerated in Champaign and its demography? There is substantive cause to believe that the project planning team will not make this a priority. Of course, we all remember Julia Reitz standing up in this room and calling the addition of a representative from a minority-influenced district to the planning team "tokenism." Less may remember Tom Betts making the remark that the biggest problem in this culture right now is that people don't think there should be consequences for their behavior. He went on to say that he is a former schoolteacher and that he has always believed that students need consequences. To be honest, I find his comparison of grown adults who want better opportunities than then afforded them in a cage to be too unruly students to be offensive. But more importantly, I think it reflects a desire to ignore the systemic factors which influence patterns of discrimination in policing and incarceration. If the consultant you hire picks up on this aversion to confronting such factors from the planning team, you can be sure that the final report will not support addressing the single greatest problem facing our criminal justice system. Second, I would like the board to ask themselves about potential conflicts of interest the consultants might have. Many firms which offer consultant services to municipalities also employ or have close relationships with corrections officials, architects, and engineers. This means that it is in their interest and that of their business partners to favor a build proposal over one which could actually reduce the jail population and improve the standard of living in the community. Is that an interesting magazine, Mr. McGinty? I would encourage the board also to examine the relationships which exist between the planning team and various consultant firms. These relationships may have even influenced who makes it onto the shortlist we will hear tonight. Finally, I would like to address the other part of the case I have been building before you and note the incredulity with which the task force received the news that they would have no part in the evaluation of the responses to the RFP, despite the fact that, just like the planning team, they have been classified as an advisory body. I must confess, it was especially hard for me to hear Ms. Bucy's justification that the task force wasn't included in the valuation process in the RFP when I had advocated for just such language prior to the RFP's approval. Thank you for your time.
Good evening. My name is Lynn Branham. I am a law professor and a member of the Community Justice Task Force, and I'm delighted to be here tonight. It's my understanding that you have received some responses to the RFP that encompasses a range of issues, including alternatives to incarceration for both pretrial detainees and sentenced inmates, case processing, what can be done to reduce the length of stay for pretrial detainees, as well as structural deficiencies in the downtown jail. The RFP recognizes that the work of the Community Justice Task Force bears on the issues to be examined by the consultants. The work of the Community Justice Task Force has just begun. We've had two meetings and we have visited the downtown jail. Though I am here speaking as an individual, but a person with expertise on correctional and sentencing law and policy, I can say that it is already very evident that significant steps can be taken within the county to diminish the use of incarceration. And that what changes are made in the use of jail space will depend in significant ways on whether these steps are taken. Here are the recommendations I'd like to tender to the board today because of the immediate decisions you will be making. Number one, as you review any recommendations bearing on who should be selected as a potential consultant, please keep in mind the need to retain a consultant whose expertise centers in particular on community-based sanctions, pretrial services, and other mechanisms to dissipate the need for what is very expensive incarceration in this county. Number two, I recommend that you secure feedback from the task force regarding the proposals that are selected for final consideration by the county board. It's my understanding there'll be two or three finalists. My own preference would be that that feedback be obtained from the task force as a whole, and I understand that the process can be modified to obtain that task force, so that's the feedback we received in a meeting last week. But at a minimum, I would recommend that at least one member of the task force be part of the team interviewing the two to three finalists. That the task force be allowed to submit a defined number of questions to be asked of all of those finalists, and that the answers to those questions be shared with the task force so that it can share feedback with you. I am really impressed by the expertise of my colleagues on the task force. I'm benefiting from it. I believe that the county can as well. Number three, I would appreciate it and ask that the county board be mindful that you have the prerogative to reissue the RFP if none of the proposals meet the parameters of the RFP or meet them to the level of excellence that the taxpayers of this county should expect and deserve. I haven't seen the proposals, but again, I encourage you, if they aren't good enough, let's get something that reaches that level of excellence. I'd like to reiterate the comments I shared with you on February 14th. If the consultant team does not offer the wide range of expertise that I mentioned, if the consultant is just an expert on architecture, it will culminate in a very primitive needs assessment that does not adequately address the pressing and long-term needs of the correction system in this county, and that includes the needs of the jail. Thank you.
Mr. James Kilgore.
Good evening. I'm James Kilgore, 511 South Draper, Champaign. Also a member of the Community Task Force as a member of Citizens with Conviction. I'd like to echo some of the sentiments of the previous speakers in terms of your decision around choosing the consultant for the needs assessment. In particular, having visited the downtown jail and seeing that through the eyes not of an outsider, but as someone who spent more than six years of my life incarcerated, I feel a great urgency that the conditions in that jail are dealt with immediately. But in the longer term, I think we have to recognize that we need to incarcerate fewer people. And therefore, when you are looking at the needs assessment applicants, I think it's crucial that you make sure that their agenda is a complete one, that they're going to look at the criminal justice system as a whole, that they're not... If we look at some of these consultants, we find that they have a string of architects as part of their team who have participated in building numerous federal correction complexes of 3,000 beds, 4,000 beds, and so forth. Now, it's very difficult to think that those particular corporations are going to be interested in simply restructuring the systems within Champaign County Criminal Justice in order to reduce the number of beds. So beware of consultants who are fronts for architects, who have a conflict of interest and whose bread and butter is based on being able to line up more jobs for architects and engineers. And then in addition, we want to make sure that these consultants are paying more than lip service to alternatives to incarceration. That they need to understand that preventative services such as mental health, such as substance abuse treatment, such as programs that attack problems of homelessness are crucial to reducing the number of people in our jails. And the reduction of people in jails, decarceration, is a national trend. Look beyond Champaign County. See what's happening in other places. In the past three years, the number of people in prisons and jails in the United States has gone down for the first time in almost three decades. There's a reason for that. People, cities, states have spent too much money on jails and incarceration, and it's coming back to haunt them in terms of their budgets and in terms of the human catastrophe of having 2.3 million people in jails and prisons. So I urge you to look carefully at this, to make a decision that's going to be the best for the people of Champaign County, that's not going to squander 20 or 30 million dollars on a new jail and continue the pattern of increasing incarceration that has debilitated the criminal justice system and the financial status of states and counties over the past three decades.
Is there further public participation? Chris Evans, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Sheriff. Chris Evans, District 8. Another thing that the voters were told in 1998 was that the courthouse was going to cost 15 to 20 million dollars. Now, you were told that this year, in January, that the core cent public safety tax has generated 49 million dollars in the 13 years that it's been enacted. So how much do we still owe now for the 15 to 20 million dollar courthouse on the expansions and the renovations after raising 49 million dollars? Well, according to the FY 2012 county board budget, we still owe 29 and a half million dollars on the county courthouse. Government at its best, wouldn't you say? In fact, if you look at all the capital projects that the county board owes, we are about 50 million dollars in debt to the year 2029. Is this county really in position to pile on another 22 million dollar building project? The taxpayers were told that the downtown jail is deplorable, but it's not that deplorable because we've got to make sure that the RFP says that the jail has passed annual inspection of the Department of Corrections every single year. It's really hard to believe that we really care about the inmates in this discussion because we're told that there are rats, garter snakes, and cockroaches, and no one has made a motion to buy an exterminator now, when it's needed, now. No one has made a motion to buy a gallon of non-vaporous paint now, when it's needed. Nobody has made a motion to look into frosted glass for the satellite jail. Maybe we can put the women over there. No one has made a motion to even buy a few more public defenders for the overworked public defender's office. Maybe move these cases along. No one's made a motion to maybe look into the pavilion. They're expanding their psychiatric beds. Could the county maybe get a contract with them? You heard from your own architect that the interior walls are not load-bearing. There's no way to remodel that jail. So all that to say, I would caution you that the RFP proposals that you're going to hear tonight are been chosen by eight criminal justice professionals who have all gone on the public record, they want to build a new jail at the satellite jail for 22 million dollars, or thereabouts. We need to be considering, in light of the financial situation, I really hope that we would look at alternatives. Alternatives that will actually decrease the incidence of crime. That is what the public really wants, a decrease in the incidence of crime. And just putting more people in more cages does not decrease crime. It actually increases poverty and stresses the society and it creates more crime. And I hope that we can find some better ways because we've got some real crises in this town regarding alcohol, pedophilia, and sexual assault, and maybe we ought to prioritize our prosecutions that way. Thanks for listening, and I really wish you luck and I hope you do a great job.
Is there further public participation? Seeing none, we'll close out and go on to communications from the board. Mr. Curtis.
Thank you. I have some exciting news. This afternoon, at the Economic Development Corporation, we met with Ms. Bucy, Mr. Hall, myself, John Dimon, and Paul Faraci with the Ariz Energy Company. Ariz is a large Spanish wind farm corporation that has now chosen Champaign County for its next wind farm. They're talking about a 150-megawatt possibility wind farm in the northwest... Excuse me, the northwest corner of Champaign County. That could mean about 75 to 90 new turbines over the next two to three years. We'll be working with them in getting all the information they need and to comply with our wind farm ordinance. Thank you.
Any other communications? Okay, let's move on to finance.
First up, we have a presentation, a report by the Champaign County Convention and Visitors Bureau. Jane DeLuce is here to speak to that and with the presentation. Jane. Thank you, Brendan. My name is Jane DeLuce. I'm the president and CEO of the Champaign County Convention and Visitors Bureau, and tonight I want to talk briefly with you about the importance of tourism in Champaign County, the highlights from this current fiscal year 12, and what's coming in fiscal year 13. So why is tourism important? Just look at the numbers specific to Champaign County. Per the U.S. Travel Association, the travel and tourism industry for Champaign County results in 2,500 jobs, $58 million in travel-generated payroll, $4.5 million in local tax revenues, $266 million in direct spending by visitors, which is a 5.9% increase over last year. And hotel occupancy is up 7% over last year. This shows that the travel industry is rebounding and people are traveling again. Research shows that travelers may not travel as far, they're being more choosy about their travel itineraries, but they're going places and they're coming here to Champaign County. So who are the visitors that come to Champaign County? Sports are big business to our area, whether it's U of I football games, or the Christie Clinic Illinois Marathon, or eight first pitch baseball tournaments happening this summer, two Illinois football club soccer tournaments that happen in the fall and spring. We are definitely a sports town. Business tourism is much more subtle in appearance, but the economic impact is huge. One multi-day conference for 100 attendees creates overnight stays during the midweek, and food and beverage tax receipts that add up to millions throughout the course of the year. Leisure tourism might include a bank travel group, visiting local attractions, or an international group of agricultural professionals doing research. It might include families visiting the museums and hiking outdoors. Consider the agricultural professionals from other countries. Visitors come here to enjoy our wide array of art and music festivals and celebrations that we enjoy as residents, too. Overall, people travel here for a variety of reasons, but they spend money shopping, eating, being entertained, filling up their cars. Those revenues go back toward public safety, healthcare, education, and contribute to our quality of life. I mentioned international agricultural professionals as part of our leisure travel market. This market is significant to Illinois and Champaign County. The top five markets to Illinois include Canada, United Kingdom, Mexico, Germany, and Japan. The CBB has recently booked international groups from Denmark, Brazil, Ireland, Russia, and Japan. Forty-five Irish farmers will visit Wood and Wood Farms next week. In August, 45 Brazilians will visit the Jeff Fisher Farm in Toledo, the AgriLiant Research in Isdale, and the Top Flight Cooperative Grain in Seymour. Just this week, we received a request for 300 to 400 hotel rooms for August of 2013 when international agricultural groups will attend the Farm Progress Show in Decatur and extend their stay in Champaign County to visit a working farm or an attraction such as Hardee's Rain Day Ranch. It's no wonder agricultural tourism is exploding. With over 577,066 acres of farmland, with the high-tech equipment we have, the National Soybean Research Lab, the area companies, these groups such as Portuguese agronomists and Brazilian Farm Bureau top leaders are making Champaign County one of the top agriculture counties to visit in Illinois. This past fiscal year has been challenging, yet filled with many opportunities. On May 8th, we opened the first-ever Champaign County Welcome Center, which serves as an information portal to the area. Events-wise, we announced the Bloomington Gold Corvette Show, which will relocate here starting in June of 2013. We announced and hosted the Hot Rod Power Tour on June 4th as the third day of a seven-day, seven-city national cross-country tour. Generating over 1,400 hotel overnight stays on a Monday night is good business with an estimated $1.3 million economic impact and is a great way to showcase our community. We introduced the Savor the Flavor program as a culinary tour of participating restaurants, and we created a package itinerary for the upcoming Blues Brews and Barbecue Festival. We hosted IHSA State Football and Wrestling Championships, the State Farm Shootout at the Hall, and the Christie Clinic Illinois Marathon, including the 27th Mile Celebration Victory Bash. In an effort to tell our story, we increased our performance reporting to stakeholders through quarterly reports, council presentations, and increased communication with stakeholders. We hope you've enjoyed reading those quarterly reports that we've sent out this year. And we focused on building our brand so that visitors and residents alike understand the mission and the importance of all of us working together toward economic development. Looking ahead to fiscal year 13, which starts July 1st for us, we will see a huge organizational shift as we create a sustainable business model based on four components. One, a tourism industry partnership program, which includes Champaign County as a gold partner, along with founding platinum, silver, and bronze partners. Benefits are based on a tiered structure, including board membership, sales and marketing efforts, and the time and resources that our staff spend on each of those partner communities and entities. Two, a new tourism development fund that coordinates primarily private partnerships to recruit and retain community signature events, many of which require a bid fee. It isn't free to host the Corvette Show, or the Hot Rod Power Tour, or even the IHSA Football and Wrestling, just to name a few. Third, we'll continue to utilize heavily Illinois Office of Tourism Grants, which we focus on three. The Local Tourism Convention Bureau, LTCB grant, a marketing grant, and an international grant. These are all matched on a 50/50 basis, so we are only limited in the amounts by which we can apply by the level of commitment of our local partners. Four, we'll work on other income, including advertising packages for the new visitors' guide that will come out in a couple months. Online advertising... guide that will come out in a couple months, online advertising, packaged itineraries, in-kind contributions, and other community support. FY13 also brings a focus on high-impact events. We'll continue hosting the Christie Clinic Illinois Marathon. We're already focused on hosting the Bloomington Gold Corvette Show next year, and we've hosted for a long time the IHSA Football and Wrestling. We promote Roger Ebert's Film Festival, and next year, yes, it is on a different weekend than the marathon. Next May, the NCAA National Tennis Championships bring 11 days of tennis players and spectators from all over country to this area. First Pitch Baseball, as I mentioned earlier, will also host again eight weekend tournaments. Last year, Don Flynn booked over 1,700 hotel nights with 378 teams. We added a webpage to his tournament site to enhance the visitor's experience. In May, the soccer club hosted 118 soccer teams, and they'll bring another 180 teams this fall. At our community welcome booth, I talked to a family from St. Louis who had never been here, and they were so impressed with their hotel, where they ate, and the tournament itself. We'll continue to partner on the Blues Brews and Barbecue Festival, after assisting their efforts to get a tourism grant of $56,000. And we will facilitate hotel occupancy and guest services for large campus events—U of I Mom's Day, Dad's Day, and commencement, sold-out weekends for our area. We'll provide a community welcome booth at the upcoming Historic Farm Days in Penfield. We'll support the efforts at the upcoming Champaign-Urbana Days at Douglas Park, and we promote ongoing Gordyville Horse Shows and other events. Speaking of events, we will continue to facilitate with event organizers the coordination of long-term planning dates, where possible, to maximize use of hotels and facilities. And to answer the question about Eberfest and Marathon, it all has to do with Easter. It's when Easter falls is why there's only so many weekends in April that we can host those particular events. We are creating a new events calendar that will focus on high visitor volume that goes to restaurants, retail, attractions, for their staffing and supply needs. I don't want to have any restaurant in town not understand why their restaurant is so busy that night, and why they're short-staffed, and not realizing that there's a large event in town. We'll focus on stronger social media presence and other ways to connect with visitors and residents. The Savor the Flavor program that we introduced in downtown Champaign was for the City Managers' Association Conference, and we're already planning another one in conjunction with other conferences coming to town. Now that the Welcome Center's open, we will create public art, historical, and other walking, biking tours, in conjunction with the ones that have already been created. And while we will focus a lot on sports, we will strive to increase our efforts in the area of arts and cultural tourism. These are just a few of the highlights for the upcoming fiscal year 13. We will address many other initiatives in our FY13 work plan, and a brand-new strategic plan, which we will share with you when it's ready. Thank you to our current CBB public partners—Champaign County, City of Champaign, University of Illinois, Villages of Savoy, Rantoul, and Mohammed, and to our newest partner, Village of St. Joe. Thank you to Stephanie Holderfield, who does a great job representing the county on the CBB Board of Directors. Thanks to Stephanie, Jeff, Patsy, and those county board members who attended our Welcome Center grand opening in May. Most important, thank you to the Champaign County Board for your gold partnership and continued support of driving economic growth through tourism development. Thank you.
Questions for Jane. Jeff first, and then Patsy, and then Ralph.
Thank you. I had a great time at your opening, so thank you for the invitation. One of the things that—I work in the Illinois Research Park, and technology is huge, and there have been talks about, "Why don't we set a convention here in Champaign?" And one of the responses back was, "Well, we just don't have a venue large enough." Can you talk about our largest venue that's inside that would maybe host some sort of technological conference? Just give me an idea.
The most—the current space that we have inside to host one is at the Holiday Inn. That's our largest indoor space in terms of meeting space in one large area. There are conversations about other facilities that might be built that will be bigger than that, but it is—it is a crutch for us, because a lot of people will say, "Well, why don't you bring in this conference for 1,000 people?" And we've tried to package the hotels of the iHotel, the Hawthorne, the Hilton, and the Homewood, and use—and even offer a shuttle service, which they do in a lot of larger cities, but they're not prepared to do that when they come here. And a lot of it will end up being, "Well, we want our trade show in one space, but we don't want to have our educational sessions in another space." So we are definitely hampered by that. And the new hotel that's going in downtown Champaign will be great for rooms, but it will not have meeting facilities to accommodate a larger group. But we have talked with them about possibility, larger meeting space in like the M2 building that could feasibly then tie in with that hotel, but that's just all conversations at this point.
Just a quick follow-up. I assume the Assembly Hall renovation—we've tried using that in the past for large conventions along with the iHotel. Are you in discussions with them at all with respect to how?
Absolutely. We are counting the days till the Assembly Hall is air-conditioned. And—to speak to that, even with this upcoming Corvette Show, which will be there in that area along with the iHotel and around the Research Park, it's—right now, they usually have an auction of high-end Corvettes. It will be outside under a tent until the Assembly Hall is air-conditioned, and then that auction will move inside. So we—we will very much—so, we have to work with the Assembly Hall, though. It's very cost-prohibitive on a one- or two-day basis to use that facility, as you might imagine, because of how large it is. And so we want to work with them on a pricing structure that will not prohibit meetings and conferences being able to use it during times that offset when there are student-based events there or sporting events. Absolutely.
Jeff, thanks. Patsy, then Ralph.
Thank you for the presentation, and you all are doing amazing things. What would help me even increase my appreciation of what you're doing is your second slide where you have all these facts and figures. I have no idea what are—the data behind these facts and figures, and it would be useful to see some of that, so I get a better handle on how these numbers are—
Where they come from? It's—yeah, I'd be happy to share that report with you. It's the Economic Impact Report on Illinois counties that's produced by the U.S. Travel Association. And they break it—break it down by county, so I'd be happy to share that with you.
Thank you very much.
And Patsy, I take a little bit of a hit, because I asked Jane to keep it at a pretty high level and brief for us, based on our agenda this evening. So Ralph, and microphone, please.
Patsy just asked the same question that I was going to ask. I was going to put it a little more bluntly and shortly, I said, "Where do you get your figures and how?"
I think we answered that for you, didn't we?
Other questions for Jane. Well, Jane, I, for one, really appreciate the extra reporting that we've got on a quarterly basis that comes in handy, and that's what we've asked for, so you've come through on that very much. So I also appreciate the substantive report based on what's happening outside of Champaign and Urbana, which is what we have to concern ourselves with, so I appreciate that very much. Anyone else with a question for Jane? All right, thank you so much for the presentation.
Thank you.
I'd like to ask for a motion to accept and place this report on file.
Aye.
By Al, seconded by Stephanie. Any other discussion on that? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next up, from the Treasurer, the monthly report—Treasurer's not here this evening—is there a motion to accept and place? By John Jay, seconded by Stan. Any discussion on the report? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next up is a resolution authorizing the county board chair to cancel a mobile home certificate of purchase. Permanent parcel number 15-025-0464. Is there a motion for approval by Jeff? Is there a second? By Aaron. Any discussion on that? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Auditors' report. Is there a motion to accept and place on file for the evening? By Ralph, seconded by Aaron. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. On to amendments and transfers. First up, amendment 12-27 for $18,520 out of the JDC. This is a reserve in fund for replacement of DVR system at the JDC. Is there a motion for approval by Lloyd, seconded by Jan? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. Item number two is an amendment 12-28 for $22,000. This is out of the RPC to accommodate the receipt of technical services contract to create a comp plan for St. Joe. Is there a motion for approval by Steve Mosher, seconded by Pius? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next up, an amendment 12-29 out of the Coroner's Office for $2,600. It says salary stipend paid by the state to county officials. Is there a motion for approval? By Diane, seconded by Stan. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. Likewise, from the addendum, amendment 12-18 for $3,900 for the sheriff's salary stipend, same situation as before. Is there a motion for approval by Stan, seconded by Jeff? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. Next up, from the Nursing Home Board of Directors, a request for approval of an amendment to the MPA Management Contract for Management of Nursing Home Compliance Program. Is there a motion for approval by James, seconded by Jan? I will—before we start discussion, Scott Gima from Management Performance Associates, Mary Ellen O'Shaughnessy from our Nursing Home Board of Directors, both here tonight, two field questions. Discussion. Jeff.
And—and more of a dialogue is what I'm hoping to have.
Actually, I'm going to ask both of them to just come on up to the mic so that they can participate, if that's all right. Jeff, go ahead.
Sure. So, reading through this—to this amendment, one of the first thing that came out of the whole discussion last time was, this should have been included already. Some of—the—when you look at PPO or the American—the Care Act, a lot of these elements of the eight elements should have already been in place. So I'm—I'm kind of miffed why it's now coming to us. So can you first address why certain things like some—like a compliance officer? Theoretically, that should be the administrator, Mr. Schutte. His compliance team should have already been done through the use of his staff. There should already be processes in place to help a lot of the compliance that you get with auditing or with—what you get from Medicare when they come in and audit. So can you give us a reason or rationale as to why now is the time, and why it's so important to do it right now on these eight steps which should have already been implemented?
The original compliance guidelines were published by the OIG back in, I believe, March of 2003, and it was always a recommendation. It was not a requirement at that time. And since then, I believe there's been at least two addendums to the original corporate compliance guidelines. But with the Affordable Care Act that was passed, compliance is now mandated if the law remains in place. We're all waiting to see what happens with the Supreme Court ruling. I suppose it comes out this month sometime, because the provision where compliance is now a requirement of participation in the Medicare and Medicaid programs would be enacted on March 23rd of 2013. So what is unknown is what happens if the act is thrown out. We don't know if it's just going to be the portion of it, or the entirety of the entire act will be thrown away. What I've been told by the so-called experts in the industry, they're saying that with corporate compliance, in all probability, if the act is thrown out, there will be additional legislation that will make sure that mandate continues with the same effective date of March of 2013. So why don't we have a compliance program in place? Because it was not required. It was basically highly suggested by the OIG that a compliance program should be in place. We actually tried. This is something I—I really totally forgot about, but at the Cal County, which is also one of our management clients, I actually undertook by myself to try to incorporate a corporate compliance program with existing staff at the nursing home. The best way to put it is it was a failure. So we identified an individual within the facility. It was not the administrator. Now, we have the ability to assign any particular person within the facility to be the corporate compliance officer. In this case, we selected the Quality Assurance Coordinator, because quality assurance is incorporated within the corporate compliance program. So we felt that it was a—a logical decision to make. What we realized very quickly is that the level of knowledge for someone to undertake, to understand the monumental regulations that goes along with corporate compliance, even with someone who has a quality assurance background, was very difficult. And for someone like me, who is not an expert at corporate compliance, and basically trying to learn it on my own also, was basically not enough. So what we decided a few months ago is basically that we needed to come up with another idea for our county clients, because we know that this mandate is coming very soon. And what we decided to do was hire an attorney that would work for MPA with a healthcare law background, and that person would put together a corporate compliance program that we could offer to our county clients. So right now, we don't have any of our county clients that are utilizing the service. We do have a Illinois-based rehabilitation company that provides skilled nursing ser—rehab services to skilled nursing facilities across the state. And we're providing corporate compliance work for that entity, because they don't have a corporate compliance program in place, even though they are also under their own guidelines for implementation of a corporate compliance program. So I don't know if I'm answering your question. Sure.
I think, of course, there were compliance programs ongoing, but the scope and the scale of what's being asked for in this act, that's what was alarming. And in terms of assigning this duty, or this program, to any of our current employees, it would be impossible. Our people are already working as hard as they can and doing as much as they can, and this is a very demanding program that will be monitored. So again, to me, it was the scope and the scale of what—we're going to be asked to do.
Any follow-up, Jeff, for now? Want to wait for round two? Steve Mosher?
If we're going to know something in two weeks about whether they kick this thing totally out or part of it out, I—I just think we should wait and find out what we are dealing with before you jump off a cliff and sign a contract. And they're saying it's going to happen any day.
Other questions? Stan James?
I guess when I'm reading this, and what I'm hearing you say, is basically no one out there really knows what's to be expected yet. But I know in most jobs, or jobs I've worked with with the HUD, as regulations and that change, those that are on staff have to learn. We have to pick up and implement the new regulations, laws, much like the county does when stuff comes across. And we do so with the staff we have and the funds we have. But what I'm seeing here, due to this new regulation, you're saying, "Well," you know, and it does, it changes quite a bit, but that's part of the business. I—I guess my mind's telling me that that's something that, you know, when you wrote your contract in there, it talks about the regulatory end of it, that you would be in compliance and have that ongoing. I mean, who's to say a year from now, there won't be another law or another regulation that comes out by the state or somebody that you have to comply with, and you come back and say, "Well, whoops, you know, we're going to have to look at this and probably charge more money." I just—I don't see that. I think that, based on what Jeff has said, and I haven't read the act, so I don't know, but based on what he has said, most of the stuff is pretty straightforward, other than some paperwork, but it sounds like to me, you might do it, and it still might be wrong, and then we'd pay this money, and we'll have to start over. Right now, no one's got a good handle on it, so I would think, from what I just heard from Mr. Mosher, maybe we ought to wait and see for sure, and then surely, somebody's going to have an answer to some of these questions.
The requirements for a corporate compliance program are well-known. So what is changing is that in March, the feds are going to make it an absolute requirement, because if you don't have it in place, they can kick you out of the Medicare and Medicaid program. So the list of items that have to be covered are well-known. Now, yes, the feds have made additions, or what they want to call clarifications, to the corporate compliance program over the past years, and that can continue. And that's part of the complexity of the issue with corporate compliance, is that it is—will always be a moving target, because the feds will uncover some new area that they seek—that they see fraud and abuse, that they're going to want to make sure that the corporate compliance program covers. Now, have they covered everything? We think it's pretty comprehensive, but there could be other areas that no one has seen as to be a problem area. I mean, it covers everything from quality of care to billing— I mean, it covers everything from quality of care to billing, background checks, et cetera, et cetera. The list is monumental. So, let me give you the example of a background check. Under the current requirements, outside of corporate compliance, all we're required to do is a background check with the Illinois State Police. Under corporate compliance, we are now required to review the GSA list and the OIG excluded provider list. And now, here's where it becomes somewhat difficult of how we handle that particular requirement. The OIG, in its infinite wisdom and the regulations, do not state what's the minimum requirement of times that we have to check that database. They just say you have to check the OIG database and the GSA database and also your respective Illinois Medicaid database for excluded providers. Now, they have clarified that to say it's highly suggested that you should check that database every month. So, now, we're going to be required on the corporate compliance that we have to submit every employee's name, every vendor that we do business with, their company's names have to be submitted and compared against the OIG and the GSA database, in addition to doing background checks on all employees that were employed by the facility. And so, to find and assign those tasks to someone in, somewhere in the nursing home, probably in the business office, in addition to what Mary Ellen said, with all the other responsibilities that we have, we found that it's very difficult to add those additional responsibilities. So, again, what we've done at MPA is kind of taken a step back and say, well, how can we provide all these compliance services to our clients to make it cost-effective? Because we know the biggest problem is finding the hours in the day for existing employees in the facility to meet all the requirements of this corporate compliance program. We already have existing, obviously, policies and procedures and tasks that we're doing. We're going through the billing, but right now, we have to, under corporate compliance, we now have to add an additional structure or layer where we have to self-assess or self-audit our claims periodically. We have to take those MDS assessments that are done on all our residents, and we're going to have to go back and take a sample and compare those to the medical records. Those steps, I can tell you, are not being done. The MDS coordinators are doing, going through training to make sure that they're completing those MDSs as accurately as possible. They're doing the best job we can, they can't. But now, we have to add a layer on top of that where we're looking over their shoulders after the fact to make sure that those MDSs are accurate as possible and that our biller is submitting those claims to Medicare with all the right codes that are required by the federal regulations, which is what they've always been doing. But now, we have to get that oversight paper trail to show that periodically, we're making sure that they're doing things as accurately as possible.
My follow-up, Jeff?
Sure.
Hearing what you just said about the regulations already being out there and that you're aware of them would behoove me to think that, you know, whether they're going to come into effect or not, I would be gearing up, which it sounds like you have. I'm not saying you haven't. But also, when I hear you talking about MBA or management firm, MPA, my thought pattern would be that if we have staff, even though they're doing other duties, that if we don't train our staff and something happens with your contract down the road, where are we at then? Then we'll have to go out and hire another firm to come in and pick up. And then, I've seen that happen before. Everyone has an opinion, and then we start over. I really think that staff should be trained or go to seminars, whatever needs to be done, just much like you're learning from the ground up and like I have with EPA rules on lead-based paint and that. But I'm just having a hard time swallowing this because I can't see where you guys having the oversight, doing all the checks is going to benefit us if something happens down the road and our staff is not aware of what needs to be done.
Well, what I have learned in being on this board for four years is the state and federal oversight on nursing homes is phenomenal. The forms that our staff has to fill out continually, the way they have to assess the patients, everything is regulated. So, I'll be honest with you, there's not enough time in the day, and our employees tell us that, to get everything done. So, if we don't, as the board, if we, you all, choose not to contract with the services, we are going to have to, I don't know any other way but to hire another employee. I mean, I would invite you to come over there and see how hard these people work. It's amazing. In the meantime, we're taking care of up to 190 to 200 patients, and they're fragile. And there's a lot of services they offer. But no one, no one over there has, is sitting around not doing anything. I'll be honest with you, our people are running as fast as they can. And that's what concerns me, that if we don't go this way, we are going to have to hire someone. And my guess is that'll cost more because you're also going to have to have a lawyer involved in this. So, then we're going to start consulting with lawyers. So, I understand your concern. Don't get me wrong. And I think you come out with a better program when you have questions like this. But every Tuesday night, I'm at the nursing home, I do a book group, and then I walk around. I've gotten to know the people really well. I'm on the board. I don't even know how, in this day and age, you can make a nursing home work because of the, again, the oversight and the demands we're getting continually from the federal and the state government. So, again, if you can show me an employee at the nursing home that we could give this assignment to, because you're right, a number of them will have to be involved, but there's going to have to be someone there that's making sure everyone's doing what they're supposed to be doing. We don't have that person, but if you can come find them, I would be more than willing to talk to you.
Okay, next up is Chris Alex, then Ralph and several others. I've got you, I've got you.
I think, from what I've heard, I mean, I think on the face of it, it makes a lot of sense what's being proposed here. I mean, MPA is already there. They understand the operations of the nursing home. It makes sense to try to leverage this effort across multiple homes. And obviously, you know, we're not going to be able to hire a staff attorney to do this, so to be able to share in the use of MPA's resources is certainly be beneficial. And I think there's little doubt in my mind that this is additional work as a result of these new mandates that, you know, we probably don't have anybody sitting around idle waiting to do. So, I understand what you've been saying to us. My only concern is I don't have any way to validate the cost. And so, what I would like to hear, and I guess this goes more to you, Mary Ellen, is have we looked at what other nursing homes are doing? Have we gone out and talked to other potential consulting firms that would provide this oversight to get even a ballpark estimate? I mean, I'm not saying this has to be a formal competitive situation, but it has to be to some extent a competitive situation. I mean, I understand this sounds like a lot of work, but whether this is $4,000 or $40,000 or $400,000 a year worth of work, I have no way of knowing. And so, we need the nursing home board to give us that assurance that you have looked at how much it would cost to have somebody other than MPA do this and come to the conclusion that the most cost-effective solution, not just because it seems to make sense, but because we've asked, is for MPA to do it.
Well, I was not at the last meeting when this came up, and so, when I got back, Mike and Scott told me. And so, I started poking around to educate myself about what was going to be required and seeing who offers these kinds of services. So, do I think we can do more? Yes. But what I saw, it's mainly law firms. It's law firms that are doing it. And what I think particularly draws me to MPA is they have financial people there, they have lawyers there, they have people that are familiar with healthcare. The services are a little broader, but certainly, if you want us to look farther, we can. But as I looked, primarily, it was law, law firms that were offering this kind of, because they see it coming too, and this can be a moneymaker. Because if you charge $200 to $300 an hour, there's a lot of work to be done here. But certainly, I'm more than willing, I think it's a good question, and I'm more than willing, I don't know how we would do it, but again, when I looked around to see if there's anyone else, such as MPA, what I found is mainly law firms are offering to do this. But I didn't call any of them to see how much. I just, when I, I don't care if there's a lawyer in here, but when I hear lawyer, I think lots of money.
If I could have a follow-up.
Oh, sorry. Except for you.
I think, I would appreciate you going through the exercise. I mean, even if you laugh when you hear the answer, we need to understand somebody's estimate of how many hours of work this is and how much we would pay per hour to have somebody do this, so we can have a way to evaluate whether MPA's price is fair.
Next up is Ralph, microphone, then Diane, then Jan. Ralph is passing. Diane, then Jan.
Probably saying a lot of the same thing, but to me, when I read some of this, some of the items that are addressed are just standard operating procedure. Now, granted, there might be some issues that take a little longer or a little more expertise to do, but many of the items of the eight items or whatever it was here, I thought, well, goodness, surely, they're doing some of that now, or they don't have to reinvent the wheel, if you will. You know, there's, there should be some sort of compliance audit internal something going on, whether it's the administrative responsible or whoever. I mean, certainly, they don't go through months and months and not go back and check what somebody's done. I mean, that's just not good business. So, I'm wondering, too, to me, it looked like things were going to be redone instead of using what maybe was already in place and combining things, because honestly, I don't see a lot of this being all new. It's something that should have been in place or has been ramped up to get in place for whatever the new procedure is going to be. Just like anybody else that changes their product or service or whatever, you prepare for that and use the same staff generally.
I think the best way to characterize it is currently, we do things informally. There's no standard process. Probably the best, another analogy is we have a quality assurance program that is, that has been mandated for years. That is a specific process that we have to go through. Quarterly meetings where we go over things like the frequency of UTI infections. And if it went up from 5% one month to 50% the next month, if we don't address that on the next survey, we could get dinged by the surveyor and say, well, why didn't you address this? Well, that's what the QA program is for. So, you could consider the corporate compliance program is an expansion of that QA process for basically every facet of the organization. So, while we will go through billing currently, and actually, what MPA has brought is we'll look at the income statement, we'll look at the statistics, and we'll say, does this pass the smell test? You know, we'll take a look at the Medicare revenue and say, okay, it should be about $450 a day. Well, how come this month it's $550 per day? And then, we start digging in and saying, where are the mistakes? If someone notices a mistake or an error, then we'll address it. Corporate compliance takes that process and makes it a proactive where you have to show that you're periodically auditing whether you think there's a problem or not. You need to sample all areas of operations to make sure that you are meeting whatever federal or state statutes that are there. So, for example, you get new employees, you have to do the background checks. You got to make, you know, all the requirements that we go through. Now, if we get dinged on the survey, we'll make sure, after, sometimes after the fact, oh, we forgot to do this. Let's make sure that, from here on, we're going to make sure that we've got all those things in there. We try to make sure that we get things done correct the first time, but there's always errors that are being made. Corporate compliance forces us to make sure that we have a set systematic process for all areas in addition to quality assurance, to try to reduce fraud and abuse. That's the whole idea behind this by the feds. They want to reduce Medicare expenditures. They want to find savings and try to make these homes more cost-effective. So, it basically just formalizes everything that we're doing, and basically, we have to have a paper trail that shows that we're doing that.
Next up is Jan.
Someone, I think, Mr. James, the American, you kind of indicated if, you know, MPA went away, our employees really need to know, you know, kind of what's going on. When I look at page 32, which you may not have, but it talks about various trainings that you would do. And could you speak to that a little bit about working with employees so that they understand the process? And if you did go away, they would know what was happening. Is that something you came up with or is that spelled out in the compliance kind of
I think this goes back to what you were originally asking about Stan, which is if MPA goes away, then you guys are back to square one. So, the compliance program, MPA is not going to be doing everything with the compliance program. It will be done in conjunction with the staff at the home. So, maybe it sounds kind of inconsistent where on one hand, I'm saying that the staff don't have enough time to do things, but we have to try to divvy up the responsibilities between the staff and between the staff at MPA to make sure that we meet the requirements for the corporate compliance program. And that will include training the staff on the requirements that are necessary in corporate compliance for their respective departments. So, and that's always been a philosophy of MPA, that we try to work with the existing employees. One of the things that I always say somewhat sarcastically is I'm not an expert at every facet of running a nursing home. I mean, I actually have a RN behind my name, and that makes me dangerous from the clinical standpoint. And trust me, you don't want me taking care of you anymore because it's been 20 years since I've been at the bedside. But it makes me dangerous because I ask a lot of questions. And so, I'm a kind of a journalist in all aspects of operations. And what we do is we empower our managers, and we empower our managers to empower our staff. Because whenever I'm making any decision, whatever it is within the facility, say in dietary, I just know that we've got a problem, and I will work with the staff and the managers to help come up with a solution. And so, the same thing will happen with corporate compliance. Now, we're coming in as being the experts. Well, not me, but our attorney is. And we're going to work with our managers to get them up to speed on the requirements for corporate compliance and then work with the staff that will be doing some of these audits and helping us out with the processes so that they are educated. And so, in the event that the county board says we don't no longer want MPA, they won't be totally lost. I'm going to argue that they're still going to need us because what we found is, is that in general, because they don't have the time to do everything, they need that oversight. It's kind of like what we do as MPA with operations. They need that big-picture look at operations, and we need that big-picture look with corporate compliance so that they keep moving in the right direction. Because what we've seen time and time again is a corporate compliance program gets put on a shelf and gathers dust. And the OIG has made it very clear that they look at a corporate compliance program gathering dust to be a worse offense than not having a corporate compliance at all. So, we need to make sure that if we implement this, that we're going to do it right and that we continue to operate effectively. So, in the event that we uncover some issue of fraud and abuse, that we're going to self-report it to the federal government, we will still get fined, we will still have penalties, but they will be significantly reduced in comparison to if the OIG came knocking on our doors and if we didn't have a corporate compliance in place.
All I have is Jeff for round two. So, who else for round one? First, Patsy, then Stephanie.
Yes, I have a couple of information questions. This is federal guidelines, so this will be going all the way across the country. It's very clear that not only an MPA, but other entities will package this. That's very clear to me, whether it's an attorney or other entities. In addition, we have National Association of Nursing Homes, we have Illinois Association of Counting Nursing Homes, and I'm very interested in knowing what are those associations going to be doing to help the nursing homes move along to this federal, new federal level of compliance, all of which may indeed cost nursing homes much less money, but fulfill the compliance that is being laid out. And I think, besides what Mr. Alex mentioned, these are some of the other options that I would like to hear about and find out what other possibilities do exist for us to be considering. That seems to me to only make sense. And Ms. Michaels and Mr. James have mentioned they're concerned about the, what seems to be, from your description, that the stringency of compliance does not seem to be presently in existence at the nursing home. I find that a little bit concerning and that we have to have this new layer of federal guidelines, federal impetus, whatever term we'd like to, descriptive term we'd like to use for this, to lay over the nursing home to make certain that these things are being done when in actual fact, in running a good business, they should be being done, period.
Next up is Stephanie, then Carol, and Stan, I've got you for round two.
Regarding your professional fees, the $40,000 annually, along with Regarding your professional fees, the $40,000 annually, along with the $5,000 retainer, so it's $40,000 plus the $5,000 retainer fee, correct? No?
Five thousand.
Five thousand, okay, thank you. The other thing that I had a question on is, maybe we can talk a little bit about if there are any type of penalties that are assessed to the county nursing home. Do we know yet what kind of fees and fines, the dollar amount, days that were not in compliance? How is that going to be processed? Do you know yet?
What I've been told, because I've asked, is there a fee schedule that you could take a look at? And the simple answer is no. It's kind of ambiguous in terms of how the feds come up with the fines and penalties. So, you know, probably not going to get this accurately, but my understanding is, you could get up to triple fines and penalties over and above whatever, if it's a false, filing of a false claim. They'll triple the damages if you don't have a corporate compliance program. If you do have a corporate compliance program, you theoretically could see those fines reduced to double. So, you're still going to pay a fairly hefty fine, but it does get substantially reduced.
Go ahead, Stephanie.
Hefty fine? Give us an idea, what you are potentially projecting as a hefty fine?
Again, it's going to vary from violation to violation. So, let me give you just one example, and it has nothing to do with a nursing home, but CVS Pharmacy was found to have not done the OIG background check or an OIG exclusion list check on one of their pharmacists at a couple of their pharmacies. So, for the period of time that this person was employed at CVS, to the time that the violation was found, they had to basically refund the feds all the Medicare claims that were billed, plus damages. Now, I actually took a look at the final letter from the, from the feds, and it didn't break down the separation between the revenue that was returned, plus the fines and penalties. But they were assessed just under $1 million for, I believe, less than a year's worth of claims that were submitted. It might have been only three or four months of pharmacy claims that were billed to Medicare. But the total fines and penalties and recruitments was about $1 million. So, that's why I'm finding it very difficult to answer your question, because basically, the feds make it difficult for anyone to really figure out exactly the breakdown between the fines and penalties, plus what has to be returned in terms of Medicare claims.
Thank you.
Carol, and then back to Jeff on round two.
Thank you. I'm certainly not a proponent of the idea at all, but I'm a little bit concerned that the board, meaning the county board, did not receive anything from the nursing home board in writing that gives us a clear picture of what we're already paying for from MPA, and according to the MPA contract, it looks like we're paying for this oversight, and a clear picture of what your administrator is doing that we've already hired. I work for an organization that receives federal funds. We received a call today that we need to do improved background checks. They didn't ask us if we had more staff to cover the additional background checks. They didn't care how we did it. They just wanted to make sure that we did it. And in this case, for us, we have to deal with two things. A, where is the money to do this increase in appropriations? And B, while we already don't have compliance and should be able to simply kick this in, which I understand, whatever your federal grant does, OIG also covers part of the federal grant that we're part of, any of the compliance issues, we have to document, period. Whether they make them mandatory or not, that is just part of the job of having a federal grant, and Medicaid and Medicare are part of the federal system. So, I am so very unclear, and I don't have anything in the packet that actually tells me why this is something we're not already doing, already in position to do, and why we would pay additional revenue to do that, which I believe, wholeheartedly, our staff should be doing. And again, right across town, there is another nursing home that just recently had an inspection, and that nursing home had some dings on their record, but they had to still utilize their staff for the compliance issues. That was the bottom line. And in this case, if we did not have a contracting company, which is an odd kind of situation because we're talking to the company we contract, who's telling us that we need to pay them more to contract them more. That's a really odd situation, and I think that this board needs to say, okay, let's look at what our staff is doing, let's look at what other nursing homes are doing in relationship to new compliance regulations, let's get something in writing other than the contract request for the money. That's what I'm asking for, and I could not support it tonight.
Next up is Jeff, then Stan, round two.
I love following you. That's great. So, really, for me, this topic is all about quality of care. And, you know, regulators have a book this thick. I've not even dared tried to read it, but I've had flipped over the cover a time, the cover a time or two. So, I understand the pain that goes behind this. You know, we've had our share of tags. Luckily, our latest one, we didn't get an IJ. It's great. We're heading in the right direction. The nursing home administrator, though, is the person, is where the buck stops in terms of compliance. They have to know that book. So, in my mind, the nursing home administrator should already be doing this. If you're looking for the person specifically who I'd point to, it's the nursing home administrator. He or she can then delegate that to whomever they want, but right now, that is the person who should know it. They should know their, their job well enough to know what the state, what actually Medicaid, Medicare, whatever rules or regs come down, they should know that. Now, speaking about what are others doing? So, I called a few nursing homes and asked them what they're doing on this. No one is going to an outside firm. Everyone, and honestly, you guys have put us in a good spot. We're breaking even. For some of these nursing homes, they're even further down. What are they doing for compliance? We've got, one is waiting on the Supreme Court, which is what I'd recommend for this group. Another is planning to train somebody internally. Another one is going to send, I spoke to an insurance company, just asking them what their people have been doing to get ready for this. Sending out to be trained for a few days, then following or auditing somebody for a week, coming back in-house to teach the compliance team. The compliance officer should oversee all of this. So, in my mind, I don't see this, this amendment to our, what we're trying to get done today, what the proposal has been, as something that has to be done today, first of all. Secondly, has to be done in the way that's already been proposed. So, I really echo Carol's sentiment on something else in writing, what else we could do. Third, I would say, back to you, if we want to use MPA, which I'm not against, tame it down to the point where acknowledging that this is part of our status quo, but we're going to need a little bit of extra money in order to fulfill this, we're going to train internally afterwards, and this is going to be something that can be done internally from, from after year one. If you want to say it takes $20,000 to train somebody, to get it in, but get it in-house so that we have it for the long term, as opposed to $40,000 perpetual, every year after year, I would prefer that. But for today, I would like to see someone entertain a motion to just delay this discussion.
Make one if you care to.
I would, okay, fair enough. I would like to propose that we move this discussion, I forget the exact word, move, defer. I would like to defer this until the August session of the Finance Committee, so that we can at least wait until the Care Act has been decided on by the Supreme Court.
Seconded by Lloyd. Is their discussion to the motion to defer to August, specific to that motion pious?
What's the consequences of deferring this two months?
The consequences if, if compliance remains as part of the Healthcare Act and doesn't get thrown out, then we'll still be faced with the March 23, 2013 deadline. On the flip side, if the entire act is thrown out, including the provision for corporate compliance, as I stated earlier, there is a conventional opinion, and it is just opinion, that Congress will pass another legislation that will make sure that that deadline continues. Because again, compliance has not been a single issue in the Healthcare Act that has been controversial. Everyone in Congress believes that corporate compliance needs to be mandated.
Well, as you know, legislators don't often move efficiently, do things efficiently. It's also possible, they may say, yes, we're going to do this again, but we may change the deadline.
Without question, that's a possibility. I'm just going by what, you know, our attorney's saying and what we're reading through our trade publications. So, again, it's just an educated guess at best.
L, to the motion to defer?
Yes. I would support a motion to defer. There seems obviously a lot of questions on, first, will the Supreme Court kick the entire statute, and then we start from ground zero again? Do we have, I'm sure you have some compliance obviously going on, so you wouldn't have to get an answer on this issue until the Supreme Court rules on it. So, I would, I would support the motion to defer if you would come up with the information, the questions answered over the next month and bring it to us in August.
Astrid, motion to defer? Microphone, please.
We defer. I hope when we discuss it again, we'll have the alternative costs and so on that they want, so we can discuss it.
Good point. So, I'm sensing that we want, most are looking at, at that as an option to defer for now, and so, based on our agenda and all that, are we ready to vote on the motion to defer? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. Thank you for the time. We've deferred it until August. Thank you.
Thank you, everyone.
Next up is County Administrator's Report. Deb.
The General Corporate Fund Revenue Expenditure Projection Report is at your desk, and the good news is, it's looking fairly stable at this point in view of the time, unless anyone has questions. I would just ask that you receive and place it on file together with the Budget Change Report, which is on the back of that handout.
Is there a motion to do so by Stan? Is there a second by John Jay? Any discussion or questions for Deb? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. Is there any other business for Finance? There is no Chair's Report, and the items for consent are B2 and all of the items from D 1, 2, 3, and 4. Thank you very much.
Okay, next up is Highway and Transportation. Mr. Jay.
Keeping up with this shortage, Highway and Transportation would entertain a motion to approve the motor fuel tax claims of May 12. Second?
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passed. I would entertain an anonymous motion after Jeff explains these next three, B, C, and D. They're all the same thing, they're just different road districts with different bridges. It's in the Joint Bridge Fund. If I could get a motion to at least start the process, and if, for some reason, when you ask the question, we need to pull one of them off, we can do that.
Second?
Moved. It's been moved by Michaels and seconded by Carter. Jeff?
So, we have three petitions. First one's from Tulono Township for replacement of a nine-by-four concrete box culvert, estimated cost of $20,000 on that project. There is a map there included and shows the general vicinity of the, of the culvert replacement project. Second one in Sadoris, similar size project, a nine-by-four box, just a little bit longer because the road is a little bit wider. That's a $24,000 estimated cost on the replacement of that structure. And then, in Compromise Township, Marvin Johnson has requested three culvert projects, all on the same roadway, within the same mile of road, of differing sizes, three-by-six is, and a couple of two-by-fours. And total estimated cost for those as a total is $40,000. So, if there's any questions, I can answer those.
Yes, Patsy.
Well, these are a number of good projects, but then, could you give us a status of what's remaining in this, these funds?
On, in the County Bridge Fund, which is where these come from, we have a significant amount of money for these types of small projects this year because we don't have any large, except for the Kirby Bridge Project that came up as an emergency project. We didn't have any really large township bridge projects this year. So, we're actually out there trying to get some of these smaller projects that the townships really need put together. I can't tell you off the top of my head exactly how much remains in that line item. I could certainly email that to you, but I don't have that figured in front of me.
Any other questions? No other questions? All right. All those in favor of anonymous motion for those three bridges, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passed. Striping bid resolution and tabulation, Jeff?
You'll see on page 53, I guess, of your packet, the bid tabs for our yearly edge line and center line striping. For those of you who have been on the board for a few years, you'll recognize both of these vendors. Varsity Striping is the striping contractor that has done our striping for, ever since anybody can remember striping roads in Champaign County, because they're, they're actually from Champaign. Americas Parking and Remarking is a company that we had some issues with two or three years ago. We awarded the contract to them because they were low, they could not get the paint. Therefore, we had to come back to the county board in July or August and award it to the second lowest bidder, who was Varsity Striping. So, last year, we banned them from bidding. Varsity Striping got the contract this year. That ban was not in place, and Americas Parking and Remarking is, is back with, with the low bid. I guess I cautiously recommend that we try these folks. My, my issue is that it's going to cost me a lot of manpower to go out and watch these folks do the work. Due to the fact that, you know, they have had some unfavorable past with us, the county board can award it to other than the lowest bidder for that reason, if you so desire. I know Varsity Striping does a very, very good job. We have never had any issues with Varsity Striping. We've never had Americas Parking and Remarking put down an ounce of paint in Champaign County. So, I can't exactly say what their workmanship is once it gets here and gets on the roads, but we have had some issues with them in the past.
Stan?
Yes? I thought you said Jan. I'd like to make a motion to go with the Varsity bid.
Seconded. It's been seconded by Mrs. Burston.
And may I get my reason?
Yes, you may.
I know we, there was a paint shortage year, a year or so ago, and I asked my dad, and I had the same problem. But when you have a contractor, you're only talking a little, about $5,000 difference. And if they do good work, and we've had some issues in the past, I think it would only make sense that you're going to spend more time double checking work and going over work, that we would eat that extra up in no time. So, that's why I'm making my motion.
Patsy?
Mr. James covered everything beautifully.
Any other questions or comments?
I think we need a roll call.
Roll call? Another call for roll call?
I have a roll call.
Roll call.
Langenheim?
No.
Maxwell? McGinty?
Yes.
Michaels?
Yes.
Mitchell?
Yes.
Moser?
Yes.
O'Connor?
Yes.
Petrie?
Yes.
Quisenberry?
Yes.
Richards?
Yes.
Rosales?
Yes.
Schrader?
Yes.
Wyble?
Yes.
Alex?
Yes.
Ammons?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Benzel?
Yes.
Burkeston?
Yes.
Betts?
No.
Carter?
No.
Esri?
Yes.
Holderfield?
Yes.
Holderfield?
Yes.
James?
Yes.
Kibler? Kurtz?
Yes.
J?
Yes. Motion passed. Next item is a very brief.
Yeah, very brief. I attended the 2012 National Association of County Engineers Meeting in Lexington, Kentucky. Some 120 vendors there, and, you know, 1,000 county engineers and consultants. Great conference, as far as learning about safety of roadways, and it's really helped me to put together some applications for some highway safety improvement projects, notably up on the Dewey Fisher Road, which I know one of the county board members sitting out there has been asking me to do for quite some time. And so, we're trying our hardest there, Mr. James, to get $3 million bucks to do that road. So, hopefully, this conference helped me put together a favorable application, along with Rita Black from KUATs helping with that as well. But, great conference. I really enjoy going to these. You learn just as much outside the meetings as you do inside the meetings.
Any questions? That was a nice, brief report. How about this follow-up report on Kirby?
I just wanted to just quickly come back and let you know where we're at on the Kirby Avenue Bridge Replacement. When we saw this issue and brought it to the county board, we made a kind of a guesstimate of the initial cost of what it would cost to do a project like this in an emergency-type of situation. We estimated that the construction materials would be in the $100,000 range, and I'm happy to say that the construction materials quote that I received, as the low quote came in at $97,000. We also estimated that the actual labor to do the work would also be in the $100,000 range. And the quote that I received from O'Neill Brothers, who is the contractor who's working on the I-57 Bridge that carries Kirby over I-57, their quote came in at $96,989. So, we're right on target with our estimated costs. We're going to be working with the contractor that's already there doing a bridge project. It will get done in that timeframe that we're shooting for, when the folks who live in the house are gone and they're vacation over to Spain. So, everything's working out well, and I just wanted to bring that back to you, so you guys knew that I was just trying to follow up and make sure that you understood that. I think what you did was obviously appropriate, and we're using that mechanism appropriately to get the project completed.
Any questions? Seeing none. Resolution for contract authority on County 8 and 30?
This is something that we've done in the past, and just let me quickly tell you why I'm asking for this contract authority. I don't know if you folks are up on what's going on at IDOT, but there's, they're jumping out IDOT like rats off a thinking ship right now. The IDOT Local Roads Engineer at Paris got moved over to Operations Engineer recently. The IDOT Local Roads Engineer in Springfield, who's the head of all of Local Roads, retired. His secretary retired. The FHWA Coordinator down at District 5 is retiring. The Operations Engineer is retiring. Everybody's getting out, which kind of causes some issues. They're moving the materials guy over to the Local Roads in District 5. So, there's a lot of things up in the air right now. We got plans sitting down at IDOT for these projects. They can't tell us when they're even going to be able to review them because they've got so many people switching places. And I don't want to miss an opportunity to bid this thing just because we didn't have a county board meeting at an appropriate time for us to be able to award it. This is a project we've been working on and would really sincerely like to get finished this year. It's time-sensitive because we're doing a Colton Place recycling. We can't do it in, like, the October, November timeframe because, once you get out there, you can't get this stuff to cure out. So, as soon as we can get the plans back from IDOT and get this thing approved, we'd like to go to bid letting. But if that happens to be the day after a county board meeting, I don't want it to affect our ability to do this project this year. I would do the same thing that I did with the Kirby Avenue, you know, emergency deal. I'd bring the information back to you at the board meeting and let you know where we're at, and as long as it's within 10% of the estimate, I would just like to have the authority to go ahead and award the project.
Been moved approval? Been moved approval? Seconded by Mr. Langenheim. Any further discussions? Yes, Patsy?
An information question. If this is, if this gets passed and these plan, the approval of the plans don't come back from IDOT until February of 2013, does, is there any drop-dead date on this resolution or it'll just stay in place?
If we're not going to bid it this summer, then I wouldn't worry about having to do any kind of special things to get it awarded. So, if you wanted to put a September 1st, you know, sunset on the resolution, that would be perfectly fine with me. But I, what I'm asking for is just so we can get this done this summer.
No, I understand that part of it.
And if it can't happen this summer, we can bid it anytime during the winter. I hope that doesn't happen, though.
Okay. Well, then, I would like to put an amendment on it of a date of the 1st of September of 2012.
Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Mitchell, I'm sorry. Seconded. Any further discussion?
Row call, please.
Row call?
Langenheim?
Yes.
We're voting on the amendment.
The amendment.
I'm sorry.
McGinty?
Yes.
Michaels?
Yes.
Mitchell?
Yes.
Moser?
No.
O'Connor?
Absolutely not.
Petrie?
Yes.
Quisenberry?
Yes.
Richards?
Yes.
Rosales?
Yes.
Schrader?
No.
Wyble?
No.
Alex?
No.
Ammons?
Yes.
Anderson?
No.
Benzel?
No.
Burson?
No.
Betts? Carter? Ezri?
No.
Holderfield?
No.
James?
Yes.
Kibler? Kurtz?
No.
And J?
No.
It's a tie?
Tie.
It's a tie, so it fails. All right, back to the resolution as it's written. I need another motion. All in favor of the motion as, as originally discussed, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye.
Ayes have it. Thank you. Motion passed. Any other business?
No other business.
Chair will have a report. And you've decided what goes on. That's all for Highway.
Thank you.
Next up is Mr. Richards. Justice Social Services, quick report. Go ahead.
Good evening. First up, we have monthly reports. We have three of them. They're a...
I'll make a nominous motion.
Mr. James makes a nominous motion to place them all on file. Mr. Rosales seconded that. Is there any discussion on any of these reports? They're all pretty normal. In fact, Animal Control specifically says everything's normal in their report. EMA had some tabletop drills, and they had set up a command post for a gas leak, but really nothing out of the ordinary. And we do have a quarterly report for probation. Does anybody else have any observations that they want to add? Ms. Petrie?
It's just an information question. The last time the new director of EMA was before the board, he indicated that he was going to arrange an open house for county board members. Would you mind checking on that, so we know when that might be on the schedule?
Absolutely. We'll check into that. Are there any other questions on the reports or any of these county agencies? All in favor of placing these reports on file, say aye?
Aye.
All opposed? The same? That passes. Is there any other business under justice? Okay. For Chair's Report, let me update everybody a little bit on our commissions. The Jury Commission is continuing to have its monthly programming on WBCP to outreach to the community and keep everybody aware of the importance of jury service. And the task force, the Community Justice Task Force, this month's meeting, everybody had a chance to walk through the downtown jail, and the sheriff and a lot of the members of the sheriff's office were kind enough to come in and walk everybody through their operations and programming. I'm sure that'll be reflected in the report, but everybody was able to walk through the current programming at the jail, see the downtown jail. And the task force has been looking at current and possible programming and seems to be focusing on ways current programming and potential programming can reduce recidivism and increase rehabilitation. And we're trying to set it up so next month, we have a chance to look at potential pre-trial services. McLean County has had an impact on their system with pre-trial services. We want to look at, something similar could happen in Champaign County. We also talked about some of the new diversion programs that are being implemented in the court system here in Champaign County, and discussed ways to implement some preventative services. Does anybody have any questions on the task force? Okay. That's the Chair's Report. We don't have anything to be placed on the consent agenda. That is justice.
Next up is Policy Personnel Appointments with Ms. Carol Alvin.
Good evening. Item A1 for policy was removed. We'll go to the appointments. Mr. Chair? I'll entertain a motion from you, Mr. Chair, for the associations.
I'd like to have, I'm with the permission of the board to have a nominous nomination motion for items B1 through B6.
Is there a second? Second by Mr. Ezri. Any discussion on that? Mr. Chair, your nominations.
Okay. For the Bayland Memorial Cemetery Association, term ending June 30, 2018, is Brenda Dismon. Cross Cemetery Association, five terms ending the same time period, John Hayden, Kenneth... Damn it, you didn't give me a chance. Belaski. Bill Payne. James Reeve Steck. And Carolyn Gonzalez. Locust Grove Cemetery Association, two terms, same time period. Francis Laufenhagen.
Leyvenhagen.
Leyvenhagen. Thank you for letting me try. Robert Grove. Mount Olive Cemetery Association, two terms, same period. Betty Logue?
Yes.
Paul Ruth? Yearsley Cemetery Association, two terms, same time period. David Waters and Kyle Windler. And Stern Cemetery Association, same time period. William McMahon. I so move.
Thank you. Is there a second to the omnibus? Mr. Richards seconds the omnibus. Any discussion on any of those appointments to associations? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Mr. Wyble, Windsor Park, Fire Production District.
Oh, actually, that's just a resignation, and the number eight is also a resignation of the member also.
Those are for your information. Those will be open for reappointment in next month?
I believe the Forest Preserve Open is posted ready, and actually, we will have, there's something that'll apply for the Windsor Park FDD. We'll have that next month.
Item 9, Champaign County Board of Health, two terms expiring, 6/30/2015.
We have one nomination, Dr. Krista Jones.
Is there a second? Second by Mr. James. Any discussion on that appointment? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Number 10, Kerr and Compromised Drainage District, is a resignation from John Park. That's for your information. Item 11, Kerr and Compromised Drainage District, unexpired term ending 8/31/2013. Mr. Chair?
My nomination is Carl Park.
Second to the nomination. Second by Mr. Moser. Any discussion on that? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? That motion carries. Thank you. Removing the C, County Clerk, one monthly report, May 2012. I'll entertain a motion to place on file. Mr. Ezri, all the way in the back. Thank you.
Kibler, not Ezri.
Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Kibler. I keep saying Ezri.
He's offended.
Sorry.
Thank you, Mr. James. Any discussion on the monthly report for the county clerk? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Thank you. Item 2, Semiannual Report, on page 79. That's for information. Any questions on the Semiannual Report? Intertain a motion to place that on file as well.
Some of...
Moved by Mr. Alex, seconded by Ms. Stephanie Holderfield. Thank you. Any discussion on that report? Any questions for the clerk? He's here. Thank you. All in favor for placing on file?
Aye.
Any opposition? Thank you. Item 3, Update on Plan for Early Voting, Off-Site Location. It's information only. The clerk is here for his presentation.
Thank you, ma'am. And thank you to Carol and Mr. Kurtz, who attended our announcement Thursday morning about our plans for early voting for the 2012 general election and hopefully for future elections in Champaign County. We've got a short little presentation. I'm not going to take a lot of your time tonight because I know you have a loaded agenda, but I do know that this has been of some interest to the board and to the public in recent years, and so I wanted to discuss with you what our plan is and some of the motivations behind it, and answer any questions, of course, that you might have as to what we're going to do. Voting is, at its fundamental level, about individuals making choices, and we've always allowed voters, of course, to make choices in terms of which candidates they want to support or which position they'd like to take on a given referenda. Election law has evolved an awful lot, especially over the last 10 or 12 years, in response to the 2000 election, especially in Florida. And modern election law now gives voters more choices than ever in the method and the timing and the location of how they actually cast their votes, and the mechanism of how they cast their votes. And in Champaign County, we've not taken full advantage of that. And our participation in early voting has been, to date, limited to early voting conducted here at the county clerk's office, with the exception of the 2010 general election on campus, which was in response to a state mandate. In part due to that, I believe, our early voting participation rates have lagged. I looked at some comparable counties that have offered early voting at multiple locations around the county, most notably Madison County, who, in my opinion, has an outstanding county clerk, and as a gentleman, I look up to him an awful lot. They conduct early voting at 10 locations plus the county clerk's office for normal elections. And for, for example, for the November 2008 presidential election, which, of course, is the most comparable election to what we're looking at for this November, they had almost 21% of their total votes cast were cast early, either at the county clerk's office or at one of those satellite locations. Our early voting rate was about 7.5%, which meant about 7.5% of our votes were cast early at the county clerk's office, down the hall. So, we were, you know, somewhere in that 1/3 of the range of what Madison County is getting. And early voting is not without controversies, but it does present some advantages to us in terms of election administration. The more folks that we can get to vote early, of course, it lessens demand on election day polling places. We have less control over the uniformity of our election day polling places. We can't guarantee you, in the 100 facilities we use as polling places in Champaign County, for example, that all voters are going to have the same experience. But when we can control it a little bit at early voting locations, whether here or whether at a limited number of sites, we have a greater control over accessibility and security and visibility and availability and the hours and the experience that the voter gets. And so, early voting, from that standpoint, is desirable. We also have some existing statutory authority to conduct early voting at what are called temporary locations. temporary locations under our existing authority as the election authority. And so we don't require county board action on anything we're presenting to you tonight. This option has always been available to election authorities in Champaign County. And that is the authority that we intend to use to follow through on our plans for the 2012 general election. To summarize our plan, we are intending to conduct early voting for the November election at eight locations around Champaign County, the primary location being here at the Champaign County Clerk's Office. Deb, if you'll go to the next slide, please. There are some logistical challenges that we are attempting to overcome. Next one, please. Sorry, location one, is that on there?
Yeah.
There we go. Oh, you were already on there, sorry. There are some logistical challenges to how we need to implement early voting in Champaign County because of the equipment that we have. And we have been daydreaming, really, about the possibility of offering early voting at multiple locations for more than a year, investigating possibilities, talking with vendors, looking at what other counties and what other election authorities are doing. And as part of those discussions, we have taken a good, hard look at the election equipment that we have here in Champaign County and tried to figure out a way to make it work and tried to figure out if we can't make it work, what alternatives we have. We've talked to a number of vendors about alternative election equipment that would allow us to do a more comprehensive off-site early voting program. And the expense for that is in the hundreds of thousands of dollars for a county-wide program, and it's just not something that's realistic. So we've compromised a little bit to use the existing equipment that we have. And what we're doing is the November 2010 mandate that the state of Illinois had that required Champaign County to conduct early voting on the University of Illinois campus. The county clerk's office, at that point, bought 12 M100 tabulators manufactured by a company named ESNS. These are the standard tabulators that go on the black ballot boxes that you see at all your polling places or that you see when you vote early at our office. It takes 12 tabulators for us to offer all of the ballot styles available in the county because each tabulator can only handle ballot styles for 10 precincts. And of course, we have 118 precincts in Champaign County. So in our office, when we conduct early voting, we, of course, offer to every voter in the county, we have to use 12 ballot boxes and 12 tabulators to offer that. We have now a second full set of 12 tabulators that we purchased in response to that November 2010 mandate. We used a federal grant to do it, but we have the equipment. What we're proposing then to do is to use those 12 tabulators and scatter them across seven sites around Champaign County. The consequence of that is none of those seven sites will be able to do exactly what we do here at Brookins. Here at Brookins, we are required by statute to offer early voting for a mandatory set of dates and times and to offer it to every voter in Champaign County, all 120 precincts. What we're going to do for the other seven locations, and now we can go to the next slide, Deb, is we're going to run a series of subsets of precincts. We have 12 tabulators, we're going to scatter them all over Champaign County. Five of our early voting locations are going to get two tabulators, and so they can accommodate up to 20 precincts. And two of our early voting locations are going to get one tabulator each, and so they're going to be able to accommodate 10 precincts each. We've done this in an effort to spread our early voting locations around the county in the interest of fairness and convenience and location. So our second location is going to be the University of Illinois campus. It's going to be in room 317 of the Alina Union. It's going to be open for very nearly the full early voting period, and it will be available to approximately 22,632 voters in 20 precincts. Deb, if you'll go to the next slide. I don't know how visible the maps are, they're better in your packets. The color-coded precincts are the precincts that will have the option of early voting at the Alina Union. They will, of course, also have the option of coming here to Brookins. So the union will be a second option for them. Next slide, please, Deb. Location three will be on the north side of the city of Champaign at Spalding Recreation Center, which is our normal polling place for city of Champaign 6 and 10. It's a very familiar location to Champaign County voters. Again, we're not going to run for the entire full early voting period. Under my statutory authority, I've got a little more discretion to adjust the hours and dates of these temporary locations. One example of why we would want to do that is the campus location, for example, there's no reason to open the campus early voting location at 8:00 in the morning. So we may run it from 10:00 in the morning until 6:00 at night. The number of hours will be roughly comparable. The other thing we're doing is none of our off-site locations will be open on Sunday mornings. Right now, we're required by statute to offer early voting here at the county clerk's office, Sunday mornings from 9:00 to 12:00. It's a ridiculous requirement of statute, but we meet it here at the office. We're not going to be required to meet it at our off-site locations, and so we're not going to. It's our lowest traffic period. We get very little traffic on Sunday mornings, and it's just not worth the effort of opening the place up. The North Champaign location, again, will be open to 20 precincts for more than 23,000 voters. And Deb, the next slide has the map. The yellow pushpin is Spalding Rec. You can see the 18 precincts in the city of Champaign, and then we bleed into Champaign Township 1 and Hensley Township. Our next location is going to be in Southwest Champaign at Meadowbrook Community Church, which is our normal polling place for city of Champaign 33. Roughly the same period, about 25,000 voters will have that available as a second option for early voting. Our fifth location, sorry, this is the Meadowbrook map. As you can see, it'll hit most of Champaign Township and the city of Champaign in the south and west side. Next, Mohammed Grace Church is our normal polling place for Mohammed 2. Again, nearly the same period, and about 21,000 voters in 19 precincts over on the west side of the city of Champaign. We would have gone to 20 precincts, but we had trouble figuring which one should be 20. So we went with 19. Location six will be in Rantoul, again, 20 precincts, about 15,000 voters on the north side of Champaign County. Next slide, please. You can see it goes from Fisher over to Kerr Township and gets all the way down to the northern boundaries of the city of Champaign, City of Urbana. Our seventh location will be in St. Joseph, at the St. Joseph Village Annex. This is one of our smaller early voting locations because there's just not the population density over there. We're going to hit 10 precincts with about 8,000 voters over in the east side of Champaign, Champaign County. And our final location will be in Tolono at the Tolono Public Library, again, 10 precincts with about 8,700 voters on the south side of the city of Champaign. The goal is for everyone that may not find Brookins to be a convenient location. I know it's unthinkable that Brookins may not be a convenient location, but I drive here every day from Southwest Champaign. It's not the most conveniently located place in the world, that they have at least one other place to go. We will be able to secure these sites. We have some concerns about ADA accessibility at a handful of sites, but we have plans to address that. And we can accomplish this plan without any additional budgetary authority from the county board. We anticipate this is going to cost us less than $20,000 to implement countywide. And we have already saved enough money in our budget for this fiscal year through some of the other things that we've done in terms of ballot printing and precinct consolidation and polling places, that we have identified the funds that we can use to pull off this early voting plan. There are a couple of people that I want to publicly thank for this being even possible. The first is the staff in the office. They do an incredible job. Most particularly, we have an analyst programmer who is actually part of the IT department, thanks to some administrative wizardry by Deb Bucy and Andy Rhodes, the IT director, who has modified all of our in-house election programs so that we can now use them remotely. So if somebody votes in Mohammed, they have 60 seconds to get to Brookins to try and cast a second vote. So they can't do it. So we've got, we've got great, incredibly talented people in the office who, when we throw crazy ideas up in the air and say, "How can we make this happen?", they run and go get it, and they just do a fantastic job, and they don't get thanked enough. So I want to thank them. And then there's a piece of legislation right now, Senate Bill 3722, that has passed both houses and has not yet, I don't believe, been transmitted to the governor. It does a number of things that are somewhat controversial tucked inside of it, are provisions that affect early voting, including the schedule for early voting. So I can't yet tell you what days we're going to start early voting. What I can tell you is whether the governor signs this or vetoes this bill, we're still going to move forward with our plan for eight sites for early voting. It just, his signature or veto will affect which day we open and which day we close. It won't affect whether or not we do this. Most particularly, Senator Mike Ferrex and Representative Naomi Jacobson, when this bill was introduced and originally amended, contained the campus early voting mandate language from 2010, which would have forced us to take all 12 of our tabulators and put them at the campus location only. Because that mandate would have required us to operate the campus early voting center as a county-wide early voting center. But because Senator Ferrex and Representative Jacobson were aware of our plans over the last year for what we intended to do, it was very easy to work with them. They were very receptive and collaborative, and they tweaked the language in this particular piece of legislation to allow us to operate our eight sites the way we had planned to operate these eight sites. And so it was wonderful to work with them. The legislation, as I said, has passed. The only effect this legislation will have on us now is whether we start early voting October 15th or October 22nd. So I do want to thank them. I am, of course, open to any questions you might have. I know this is of some interest to a handful of you.
Congratulations.
Thank you. I wanted to thank Senator Ferrex and Representative Jacobson and our county clerk, Mr. Hooton. This is a breath of fresh air. What we see going on around the country is many areas trying to decrease voting. This will expand our voting and the privilege of being able to cast a vote, which is more than just a privilege here. This is something that I would consider the most democratic of all activities, is being able to vote at a location that's convenient. So I wanted to thank all three, and this certainly changes the outlook, as it has been in the past, of being able to work together on both sides of the aisle. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Quisenberry.
Yeah, are these precinct lists set in stone at this point?
No.
Are you open for adjustment?
Absolutely, I'm open for suggestions.
Because I would like to suggest that Cunningham 11 in Urbana, which Orchard Downs is in, should be added to the group that can vote at the Alina Union because that's a population that may not have the opportunity to get out to Brookins, but they're being lumped in with the residents in southeast Urbana.
Let's trade some emails on it. But I'm absolutely open to suggestions.
Any other questions for the clerk, Ms. Petrie?
Hi, I have two information questions and one congratulation. The first information question is, is it set in stone? It's going to be on the third floor of the Alina Union, or is that still being negotiated?
No, it's, that location is set in stone. And we made that decision in conjunction with the management of the union, with university administration leadership and with student government leadership, and the leadership of both political parties on campus. The union, I guess, is going to undergo some renovations this fall. And this is actually the only room in the union that is available to us for the entire period. And it's normally a meeting room, it's gorgeous, it has an ornate old conference table in it that they're worried we're going to make them move. They've offered to change the locks on the doors for us. And I'd like to add, all of these locations have been donated to us. Nobody's charging us rent for up to three weeks of consecutive use and security and everything else that we need to do there. So the folks who have loaned us the facilities are going above and beyond, and they've all done so on the understanding that we would like to do this for every county-wide election moving forward in Champaign County. So this isn't necessarily going to be a one-time deal for a lot of these folks.
Okay, the second information question is, what is the key reason for the success in Madison?
I think they're, I think they have excellent sites. I think they do a great job promoting it, which we hope to learn from, a little bit from their ideas in terms of voter education. This is going to be a voter education challenge because everybody's going to look at a map and assume that they can go to any location at any time, and we're not at the point technologically where we can offer that. So we're going to have to do some voter education. Some of it's cultural. They've also had six elections to get used to the idea that they can go to their village hall. Madison County, they've, they operate their systems a little bit differently than we do. All of their early voting locations are county-wide because when they bought their large collection of election equipment in 2005, many of you were on the board when we modernized our election equipment in 2005. In 2005, in Madison County, they bought two different sets. They bought touchscreen early voting machine, or voting machines for early voting that they can put at 10 village halls and city halls, and they have their city clerks function as election judges. So they don't even have to staff their locations. And all of their locations are available to every voter in the county. It would be incredible to be able to do that, but that system would cost us $600,000 or $700,000 right now. And so we have to make do with what we have.
Okay, and the congratulations is on getting this done and without...
It's not done yet.
Well, it's on its way. And without needing any extra funds from the county, we'll keep that in mind as we do the budget.
Yes, ma'am. Any other questions?
Thank you. Thank you so much. All right, okay. One thing technology is not good for is moving quickly from screen to screen. So, let me go back. All right. That would be you, Ms. Bucy, item D, county administrator, report.
It was in your packet, but one section was missing, and that is the vacant positions listing, so there's an updated version at your desk tonight. I would just ask you, receive and place it on file.
Mr. Quisenberry, second by Mr. James. Any discussion on the information in the report? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Next, we will have our visitors in other business, electric aggregation opt-out program for residential and small, commercial, retail, that's a long list. Customers, referendum ballot question. I'd like to invite you all to the podium. Mr. Kurtz.
Madam Chair, I have to recuse myself from this discussion and this vote as I am in the energy business, and this would be a conflict of interest.
Thank you. I'd like to welcome the gentleman from Good Energy up to the podium.
Hi, good evening, members of the board. My name is Charles DeCastigia, and this is Gary Fogelman. We work for a company called Good Energy. Good Energy are a national energy consulting firm. We have offices in New York, Connecticut, Cincinnati, and here in Peoria, Illinois, and in Dallas, Texas. We specialize in aggregation of, well, we initially specialized in the aggregation of commercial accounts, like the county has commercial accounts, which they may have an agreement for. We've been doing that with multiple counties and multiple municipalities in different states throughout this country. There are about 22 deregulated states. Most recently, we've been involved here in municipal aggregation. We started with a group of municipalities that we were already the commercial consultant for in the Peoria area, and we put together a buying group that just completed its purchase on May 8th. It included 50 municipalities in the Ameren portion of Illinois, because we can only aggregate Ameren with Ameren and ComEd with ComEd. And that group, which represented about 215,000 households, purchased power. Urbana was a member of that group locally, and they purchased power at about $0.04 for the next two years, which resulted in about 25% to 35% savings on an annual basis for all of the residents in that buying group throughout the municipalities. We are currently, and why we contacted your county, we are currently putting together our second buying group, which I sincerely believe will be the last large buying group in Ameren, is it seems that most municipalities, all the way from, you know, down south to central Illinois, are putting this on the ballot for November, especially with the savings here. We have already, we already have professional services agreements in the second group with some large municipalities like Bloomington and Normal, Granite City, Collinsville. And we are speaking very closely with Decatur and many communities in this area. Met today locally with Mohammed, just came from their meeting, went to St. Joseph, had a follow-up meeting with Urbana, who have just finished their, what's called the opt-out period after, after you have a successful election in a bid. I can put a PowerPoint up here, and we can go through this, you know, line by line, or I can give you even more, a little more of an overview. And I'm pretty sure you're pretty aware that Champaign and Urbana have done this locally and that they are going to be receiving savings and that they did pass. And it certainly, we work, we have six counties that are currently clients, Peoria, Tazewell, Stark, Marshall, and Mason. Only six counties passed this in the March referendum. So counties are a little trickier than the villages and the cities. And the unincorporated is harder to identify, it's harder to market to. But these are things that we learned, I think we've learned to do them better after doing them in the first round. So by and large, across the state, the counties failed. I think there's enough awareness in this region that with a properly-run marketing campaign, which we do, it... campaign, which we do, we pay for all of that. I don't know if you've reviewed the professional services agreement that was in your file, but this is one of the things we do. But I think that we could certainly have a successful referendum here in the county. I am certain that if the county were to join with the other 100,000-plus households that we currently have, we hope to have a buying group of 200,000 households, that you would achieve the best rate at the time after the election, right? We would only be able to take you out to bid if you had a successful election in the general election. Our services include, I mean, just to back you up from a timeline, this second round is moving a lot faster. And the reason it's moving a lot faster is you have to have this on the ballot by August 20th. If you don't, you're out. And we had some really, really interested municipalities who missed a couple of these steps and unfortunately didn't make it and are now, well, six months in arrears. But we need to get your data going. There's something called a premise cleanup, and for the unincorporated, it's very complicated. Ameren doesn't know exactly who the unincorporated are. They have municipalities. We have to sort of subtract them from your footprint and figure out who exactly needs to receive mailers, where billboards, these are all things we do, have to be put up. Because when the election happens, it's our intention with as soon as possible, you have to do two or three more small steps to take the group out in the same way we took out our first group. Take it out to bid and get back a price so that by January meter read, you're flowing the discounted rate that all these other communities already have.
So do you want to go through your PowerPoint quickly?
Sure. Gary will have to give you his laptop to write.
She has it already. Is it the one you gave us previously?
Yeah, that's a little dated, but I can work with it.
Yeah.
Should I be entertaining questions while we're working on this?
Well, I thought about it, but it might be in your PowerPoint. But go ahead.
I have one question. Now, you said it's opt-out period. Is that a defined period?
It is. It is. So here's the beauty of it. If you pass your referendum, and residents don't want to be in this program, well, first of all, they can vote against it, right? That's the first thing.
Let's say we pass the referendum.
You pass it. The opt-out period is about 15 days long, so everyone would get an opt-out letter, which just happened everywhere. It happened here in Urbana, and it's going to happen in Champaign. The opt-out letter will tell the person, like, "This is your new rate, dear resident. This is your new rate. These are your projected savings. If you don't want this," there's a little form at the bottom of the letter. You have to fill it out and send it in. If for some reason that person's away, or doesn't get that notice, or whatever the case may be, there's a second opt-out period. And that comes from Ameren, the utility itself, when they know that your account is going to be switched. That's another 10-day period. So there are two opt-out periods. Those who have not opted out are in. I think the percentage that we're projecting for the first round, it's all settling right now, is something like 4.5% have opted out. That's it.
Mr. Molsher.
This is going to apply to Ameren, or is REA going to be part of this too, for the county?
Sorry. What's the question? I'm sorry. Is this going to be for Ameren residents?
Is this Ameren alone, or is REA going to be part of?
I don't know what REA is. I guess that's the -- oh, no, no. Okay, that's right. All municipal co-ops are not included, right? There is no deregulation behind a municipal co-op, so this is only possible for the Ameren customers in your county.
Ms. Petrie, then, Ms. Mike.
Two questions. First, if I'm remembering correctly, didn't Urbana set theirs up so if people are on Power Smart pricing, they don't get folded into having to opt out?
Right. So there are a couple of different groups that would not be on the eligibility file. The people that have already chosen, right? So people that have signed up with some of the offers that you get in the mail. Anybody who's done that is in a contract. They do not show up on the Ameren eligibility file that we get for Champaign County to take the county out to bid. Another group are people that have made what I call Ameren elections. They've chosen to become Power Smart customers because those people, we didn't feel it was right, because they had already decided that they did not want to be on regular Ameren rates, and they wanted to be on something that they can control. So what we've done for those people are those people are going to get, the Power Smart people are going to get an opt-in letter so that they can sort of take the price that the group got, or not, but not be automatically enrolled if they did nothing.
Okay.
The people that signed up as suppliers, they have to figure out what their penalties are. Certainly, the municipalities, certainly us as the consultant or the winning supplier cannot advocate that they break those contracts. They do come with, some of them onerous penalties.
Second question is, how are we going to have any ballpark idea of the number of households within the county that might benefit from this?
Well, I believe your unincorporated household count is about 15,000. Would that be about, right?
But we don't know if all of that is under Ameren.
Right. But we'll know that when we get back the, there's an initial premise list that we will get back once you have passed a resolution that you're going to put this on the ballot. We'll get a premise list that we'll have to work with the county administrator to figure out, because if people are in areas that are not part of Ameren, well, Ameren won't have anybody on that list who's in a co-op. They can't figure out exactly where some of the lines are, right? This is not a perfect science, but they're not going to have the people that are in the co-ops, for sure.
So what you're saying in essence is there's approximately 1,500 households that could benefit from this referendum?
15,000.
15,000.
Right. And I would figure that about 5, maybe 8%, depending, have already made a decision to go with some sort of supplier.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Michael, send in Mr. James.
Going along with that, Eastern Illini Electric is a co-op.
Right.
Who I'm with, actually.
Right.
And that takes care of quite a bit of northern Champaign County.
Right, okay.
And then, of course, then the Villager and Tool has its own utility, so those are not --
So those are all out. So we're talking about Champaign County exclusive of that?
Yeah.
Right.
Well, not northern Champaign County.
Right, okay.
I'm down to the roof. I am on Ameren. My question would be, your rates, are they very much lower than what we're already paying?
Right.
I mean, basically, all you're doing is becoming a supplier. You're buying this at a reduced rate, almost like Rantool does for their electricity.
Right.
But we still have the same taxes, and we still have the transmission of the lines and all the other stuff.
Right. All right, so this is perfect.
Great.
That's the bill, okay? And the red portion there, the transmission and distribution, everybody pays that in Ameren, no matter what you do for your supply. You're going to pay that. That's your local distribution company. The part that changes are those line items that are part of the electricity supply. When you're on with a new supplier, those four or five lines will be condensed into one line. And that's very important, actually, to note here, that in the new program, no matter who the supplier is, this is by law going to only come on an Ameren bill. They're not going to get a bill from someone else. And actually, Ameren's going to collect the money and pay the supplier.
And one follow-up on that, if I may. Is your rates locked in for a year?
Right. It's locked in. So Gary, go forward a little bit. Let's see. We just talked about what is opt-out. They get to choose. Okay, a little further. Okay, so that was our first group. And the average price that they were paying was about 5.8 to 6 cents a kilowatt hour for supply, and we just achieved $0.04.
I plug in my name.
Right. Exactly. So next, let me see if the next one here. Oh, there it is. Okay, so we had five bidders. We ran a huge bid, and in the end, we came up with $0.04. We also bought this power 100% renewable. Wow, it's probably more expensive. No, it really wasn't. It was just a tiny bit more expensive than, it could have been a little less than $4 flat had these, but these municipalities chose to buy 100% renewable. They wanted the recognition. They knew their voter base, and they thought this is what they wanted. The next best offer, which was not Ameren, which is one of those marketing offers, was All right, Group Two. That's what we're building right now, and we're moving as fast as possible, and we're hoping that we'll have about the same amount of buying power. And that's what we're trying to include Champaign County in. I don't know, this is, there's a British guy works for me, and he kind of writes some of this stuff up, but the perfect storm. Anyway, there are great savings. Those savings are going to be there for a while. One of the things that we put into the contract that we did for the Round One customers is we had something called a price match. So in essence, it was a guarantee. So the winning supplier, if the Ameren rates were to fall at any point during the term of the contract below the rate that we had contracted at, $0.04, they would be obligated to either return everyone to Ameren with no penalties, or match the rate in their option. Gary? Okay, let's keep going. Okay, so what does this mean? Well, it was probably about $200 a year per household. That's what this did. There's also a very small slither of small commercial accounts, 15,000 kilowatt hours and under. Believe me, 15,000 kilowatt hours and under is a house where somebody's operating something with an extra television set. It's, I might use more in my New York apartment. I'm not sure, but 15,000 is not a lot. Let's see, keep going here.
You could also touch on why the pricing is, why we're achieving price courses.
Right, right. Okay, so Ameren buys, not Ameren, the Illinois Power Agency buys power for Ameren and ComEd for the residential sector. And the way they buy it for Ameren is they buy a third of it every year. So as you all know, energy's very cheap right now. So we're currently carrying, in the rate structure here in Ameren, two pretty expensive years. And that will continue for a couple of years because as everyone migrates here, those who are not in are going to have to carry the cost of Ameren having to spread what's left of that power until they're through with it onto the other customers. So it's actually, it's a double negative if you're not in. And I think by the end of the November election, 65% to 70% of all Ameren residents, because we know there's a ton of activity down south and everywhere, we're doing a lot of work down in the metro east, will probably have, I don't know, 70, 100 municipalities. We're certain that really Ameren will become a default provider of last resort for those who are not buying through municipal aggregation. Ohio is the state that did this before this. Two-thirds of Ohio is on with municipal aggregation.
Quick question.
Sure.
Like your company, what would happen, like Enron, when it folded?
Right.
Because I had some good friends that had power through them, and they ended up not getting a rebate.
Right.
Go back to that. So is there a possibility that your debt could hold up, and then we --
Right, we're not a power company.
Or do we got to pay you upfront?
We're not a power company. We're a consultant, and you actually aren't going to pay us anything. The price, the way we are paid is through the price of the winning supplier. So we get a fee per kilowatt hour, so the more kilowatt hours, the more we get paid.
We're Jay when I need him on consults.
And that's how it's done nationally. The other side of this is, you could decide to pay us, and we would not have anything in the winning bid. I haven't found that that's what most municipalities like to do here in Illinois. Sure.
Mr. Molsher.
I am on Ameren, and I've got three-phase powered grain drying system that the more we use, the cheaper it is per kilowatt hour.
Do you know what your step-down rate is?
I don't know what it is.
Because they just reset the steps. So there are certain users, the residential users, that use a lot more than anybody else. And for the last couple of years, once they'd used over 9,600 kilowatt hours a year, they went from a, whatever it was, a $0.6 rate, down to a $0.28 rate. So when you blended them out over time, they went down. Well, all those second-tier rates, as of June, just went up substantially. And I can't think of a situation, unless you're using about 300,000 kilowatt hours a year, that at $0.04 you wouldn't be saving something in the high single digits at a minimum. But you would be able to figure that out.
Well, I've got a minimum drying bill when we run nine vans on grain bins at $1,800 to $2,000 an hour or a month.
Right, right.
I mean, what good's that going to do me when we're gobbling up as much as we are with Ameren on a discounted rate?
Well, your Ameren discounted rate just went up for the second-tier high-usage customers. So I'm pretty sure your Zone Three and your rate is in the, I think it's in the 3.8 range. I don't know exactly. I don't know where, if you're in Zone One, Two, or Three, Ameren's slightly different. Three.
Ms. Petrie, and then I'll ask our consultants to close this part up because we have to get to the ballot question, whether we're going to do it at all.
Yes, I have another information question. For those people who are on Power Smart pricing, which is much lower than anything that either Champaign or Urbana was able to contract, why would they consider supporting this or opting in?
Well, I think that they would support it because they would have every option available to them. They could stay with Power Smart. They could fold, they could decide to take this price when they saw it, or they could take a street off, or they could stay with Ameren. They have the whole, you know, they're not forced out of Power Smart. They don't lose it. They have it. And let me give you, when you vote as a county, even though you have co-ops, a lot of the people in the co-ops in the other parts of Illinois knew that they weren't going to be able to take advantage of this, but they voted yes for their neighbors.
Can I just say something?
You can say it when you decide if you want to do the ballot question.
Okay, so Gary, I want to go forward a little bit. There's a whole timeline. It's very detailed, and there's a huge workload, and it really starts basically now. You know, one of the things that has to happen, that should happen, is that people in the unincorporated, people in the county should know why it might not be in their best interest to take what they get in the mail, those street offers, so that they are actually eligible in November. But I have a very detailed timeline with lots of responsibilities and things, and marketing campaigns, and billboards, and all that, but I think you understand that. Okay, so what do we do? We assist with community notification, working with the municipal authority to devise and execute mass marketing plans ahead of referendum, mailings, newspapers, billboards, community meetings, radio, television. I've done a lot of radio and television. We prepare something called the Operation of Plan and Governance. This is the document with, this is the living, breathing document that sort of outlines the program that the county will have. We assist with, you have to have two public hearings on it. We assist with the public hearings, respond to questions from the community. Then we, you know, obviously, we manage the whole bid process, the negotiations, and all the things that are in the opt-out periods. We also manage a full-time inbound call service for everyone. We have a website called munienergychoice.com. It's live right now. It's live for people that purchased in the first round of Ameren with us. It's live for communities that are part of the second round. You can, it has all the rates. It has links to all of the current rate structures. It has people to call for questions. So that those questions and all of that can, we can divert that from your staff and take it away from them, because this is, it can be a lot of work. All right, so back one. Gary? All right, so this is the question that's on the ballot. It's a little bit of a tongue twister. Shall the county have the authority to arrange for the supply of electricity for its residential and small, commercial, retail customers who have not opted out of such a program? So we have to market in advance for this, because people, and it seemed, I mean, in the last election, it was like the last question. The electricity proposition -- the last election, it was like the last question, the electricity proposition question. It was on page like wherever. It was far away. Obviously, there's a little bit of, we had two communities fail that had some sort of increase in their municipality, something to vote on that was some sort of tax increase just above it. So, to be very mindful of what you put on the ballot with it, because some people just get upset, and no, and no. I don't know when the next election is, so this is probably the last shot at it.
So, at this point before, I'd like to entertain a motion for the approval of the ballot question to be on the referendum. Moved by Mr. James, seconded by Ms. Burksen. Discussion of the ballot question being put on the November ballot. Ms. Anderson and then Ms.
I have a question. I live in Champaign, so we've already taken advantage.
Right.
Does everybody in the county vote on it, or just outside of municipal?
Just outside of municipalities.
No, everybody in the county will vote on it. The county clerk cannot separate out, so it will be placed, it'll be a countywide question coming from the county board.
I do have two kids who live out there who could benefit.
Ms. Wyble?
I would, I think this is a good idea, because if anything, gives the citizens another option.
Right.
They can, as you mentioned, they can go with Power Smart, they can go with, you know, Joe Blow Energy Company, or they can go with this program. It's a good idea, gives them another option, they can decide how they want to save money.
Right, exactly. And when the initial bills come in for Champaign and Urbana in August, everybody's going to know about that, because it's kind of like, okay, you got this, but then people are going to be like, wow, we really did.
Let me entertain the questions from the board, unless directed to you, so that we can move past this point. We'll deal only with the question on the November ballot. If you have questions about that process right now, do you want to talk to them?
I just want a clarification, because in our packet, it seems like it's in agreement with Good Energy as opposed to something being placed on the ballot, and just looking at the-
That's the second, that's the second item. Right now, we're only dealing with the ballot question.
Just ballot straight up. So, Good Energy really has, at this point in time, no impact on this ballot question.
Not in this question at this moment.
Thank you.
Any questions about the ballot question? Ms. Petrie?
Is this a predetermined wording from God, or what the state, or what?
About a statute or something?
Statute?
Mr. Richardson?
Just want to encourage everybody to vote for this. We've deferred this before, and as these guys said, this may end up being for the best, because we can show the voters the benefits of this come November. This, there were a lot of bad things in Illinois, energy deregulation. This is a very good thing that's going to be happening to people in the cities, and I think we owe it to the voters of the county to decide if they want lower energy bills. I think most people will.
Thank you, Mr. Quisenberry.
I'd like to call the question.
Thank you, Ms. Quisenberry. Second to call the question? Thank you, Ms. Burksen. Voice vote, okay? Good, thank you. All in favor of place-
Voting to call the question.
I'm sorry. Yes, I am going to, yes. All in favor of calling the question? Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. The question is, shall the county of Champaign have the authority to arrange for the supply of electricity for its residential and small, commercial, retail customers who have not opted out of such a program to be on the November 6, 2012 general election ballot? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. Thank you. Item two is the service agreement. The service agreement is for professional services from Good Energy LP with Champaign County, although it's been explained already that we don't pay any money for this agreement. This is selecting a provider at this point. This is not the only provider, but this is a provider. And if you've had an opportunity to read the agreement here, if you have questions, we can entertain them with our guests at this point. Mr. Alex.
I'm going to pick these guys.
Actually, they came to us highly recommended by the city of Urbana, and given the experiences of the cities of Urbana and Champaign, Champaign did this within the city and did it with their own staff, basically. And Urbana used Good Energy and applauded the excellent assistance they got for putting together information before the referendum. And then, absolutely, at the end of the day, they ended up with a better rate, and I believe that's attributable to the fact that this is a consortium of bringing many, many households together for one buy. And the city of Champaign had only their own households for the purchase of power that they did. So, from my perspective, I would highly recommend using Good Energy to assist us with this. I have no idea where we would come up with the staff resources to do what they will be doing to assist you and the citizens of the county with this particular initiative.
Mr. James, and then Mr. Wyble.
I'll make the motion, place their name on the ballot.
Place their name on the ballot? I'm going to go to Mr. Wyble and come back to you.
There you go. Whatever Pius wrote.
Mr. Wyble?
I believe you may have a motion. I'll second his motion.
Okay.
I'll point out what Mucy just said. That's the reason why I pulled the agenda from the item last December, because, you know, we had just no idea how we're going to get staff to work on this. So, and they just sort of, you know, fell out of the sky, so to speak, and that's all. This is an opportunity that we go forward with, so that's why we're going to you here today. Now, the other question I have is, there is a possibility the county could get some revenue out of this. Could you talk about that?
Sure. Okay, so, obviously, we make something per kilowatt-hour that everybody knows what our fee is, and I'm happy to tell you what it is, because it was the same in the first round as it'll be in the second. So, on a per-kilowatt-hour basis, we make point, it's three zeros, then a seven and a five. So, three-quarters of a tenth of a penny. And we reduce people's costs by, just to put it in layman's terms, twenty-tenths of a penny. Eighty-five percent of our municipalities in the first round took an administrative revenue. I mean, you can just call it whatever you want, but they took a tenth of a penny revenue stream from this. They, I mean, a lot of them had a lot of work to do, but a lot of this revenue that they took, in my experience, has been pointed towards, or allocated to hire someone, staff-wise, to do renewal and other things. But that's, of course, entirely up to you, it's entirely up to your board if you want to take a revenue stream. But I will tell you here in Ameren, and Urbana's taken one, and every other major community that we worked with in Ameren has as well.
Ms. Wyble?
When would that decision be made? After the election, or?
What, when you want to-
On revenue stream, about whether they have one or not?
We have to know before the bid goes out.
Okay.
So, you have a long time to think about that.
Hi, I'd like some clarification on the term and termination specifically. The moment that we decide, if something were to happen and we want to terminate the agreement, can you explain what the term of electricity purchased through this residential, small, commercial, opt-out contract by the current alternative supplier means? So, that means we'd have to pay the bulk of whatever electricity was purchased through the program right then and there, is basically what it sounds like.
No, no. What that means is, let's say we go through November, we have a successful bid, and remember, we're not getting paid anything unless you actually sign a contract with the winning supplier after the bid period. So, we're talking probably the end of November, early December. And once you've done that, for whatever period of time that is, our fee is locked into the kilowatt-hours of that term. So, that's an 18-month contract or a 24-month contract. What it also says in that professional services agreement is that if you don't want to work with us somehow, or some reason, six months into it, and want to terminate your working relationship with us, that is not going to affect the fact that we are going to be paid by the winning supplier through the end of the contract. And also, so the revenue stream that municipalities receive is also protected in the contracts. Does that answer the question?
Let me rephrase it, I guess, what I think you just said.
Right.
So, that means at the moment that if we terminate the contract, there's really no penalty to the county whatsoever?
No, none.
Well, contract or the agreement with Good Energy?
The agreement with Good Energy, there's no penalty.
Okay, yes, the agreement with Good Energy.
Zero.
Okay, and assuming that you guys are not Enron, but let's assume that you do, and all of a sudden, you implode, I assume the contract is not with you, but with the specific energy supplier.
It's with the supplier.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, 2014, when it's listed, June 30th being the last day in the packet.
Right.
After that, at this point in time, I mean, we don't know exactly what would happen after that. I mean, if there's, in terms of rates, I mean, at this point in time, the worst, I guess, would happen would be just go to whatever rate Ameren is at that point in time for the customers again.
Oh, okay, no, I mean, that story hasn't been written yet.
Yeah.
But basically, it would go through the same procedures, right, the spirit of the law and everything. If we came to the end of the term, and, or at any time in this term, that you signed a contract that you wanted to purchase further out, or purchase from the end of term, you would have to do this, all the same things would have to happen again. Everybody would have to get opt-out letters. There would be the same rescission period with Ameren, the utility. And as far as work, and as far as your agreement with us, that would not necessarily have to continue. You could be purchasing on your own at the end of this. Or if, for some reason, the Ameren rates were so much lower, which I don't predict, you would probably want to send all of your residents back to Ameren. But these would all be in your option only.
Any other questions about the agreement? All in favor of entering the agreement. I just want to say before we do that, actually, that Ms. Bucy said this agreement would go to be reviewed by the state's attorney's office before next Thursday's board meeting, in case there are concerns with it. It'll come back to the board after this point, okay? So, all in favor of signing the agreement with Good Energy, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Thank you. That'll be all. Thank you.
Thank you, ladies and gentlemen, for your time.
All right. We are consent, right? All of the appointments are on consent on the agenda. The, well, no, the ballot question itself, but not the aggregation agreement. Thank you, that's all from Policy.
Chair?
Yes, I'm sorry.
Can we have a five-minute break before we go into the long discussion on the RFPs?
Mr. Betts, is that okay with you?
Excuse me?
You're the next chair.
You need the break.
We'll take a five-minute break. He needs a five-minute break. We'll adjourn for five minutes.
We're back in session. We're sitting at facilities right now, and we, and so we still have yet another closed session this evening, so we will try to move facilities along. You all should have received on your desk the rankings that the committee put together, I should say, everyone submitted, and they were compiled by administrative services for all of the eight entities that submitted responses to our RFP. We have them at the desk, and they, there are clearly some that have high rank in terms of the total points, and some that have a lot lower. I know some members have had a chance to go through all of the materials. I know I did. I know that Mr. Kurtz did. Jan Anderson came to my house and borrowed a very heavy package from me. I think they went on to Astrid, and I don't know where, and I think Astrid may have given them to Ralph. I don't know who else, where they are right now. You gave them to Ralph. Did Ralph give them to Astrid? Anyway, a number of folks have had a chance to go through all of the materials. I don't, and Patsy did, and I don't know where they're, and Mr. Quisenberry, and Mr. Alex. So, a large number of folks have gone through all of the RFPs. And I think that everyone would agree that it is a very interesting and substantial process to go through that amount of material. You can almost evaluate it by weight to some degree. It was a lot of material. They were all generally very responsive to the RFP that we put out. And we have the information on the floor for folks to look at, and a process for folks to look at, tentatively. We want to have a meeting to do interviews with the finalists, a special meeting on the 26th. And that's where we're at right now. Mr. Alex?
For the purposes of discussion, I would like to make a motion that with regard to RFP 2012-003, we select the top three finalists as ranked by the jail project planning team, and ask those firms to present in an open meeting on the 26th of June. I would further like to move that the final decision with regard to which firm to engage be made at a, at the number two, on the number two July committee of the hold date, which would be July 10th, and that that also serve as a combined Cal. Number One and Cal. Number Two meeting for such matters as the county administrator should need to bring.
Seconded by Mr. Jay. Discussion. Ms. Ammons?
Let me clarify before I make the statement I'm going to make. You're asking to, not only in this one motion, accept the top three, but you also, but you're also in that same motion, asking to accept the schedule for the next Cal, the next Cal meeting on July?
That's correct. The reason I made them as one motion is, I feel that it would be appropriate for the county board to have time to hear input from various sources on the presentations prior to have, rather than having to make a decision on the same night. And I'm concerned that based on our original discussion of potentially not having a Cal meeting in July, we might not be able to make a selection in a timely manner.
Just, are we talking about the July 10th meeting being noted as a special county board meeting for this action item, so that you would actually approve a contract that night, or are we talking about July 10th as committee action on the contract that would then go to the July 19th board meeting? I'm just asking for clarification.
I didn't specify. I think I said committee of the whole, but I'd be open to-
You anticipate the contract to be approved that night, because we don't normally take final action, resolution-type action at Cal meetings?
Going to have to ask for some procedural input from Mr. Betts on this.
Well, procedurally, you could certainly have it be a special meeting as well as a Cal meeting.
Right.
But you have to designate that it will be a special meeting followed by a Cal meeting.
For this action item only.
Fine, let's do that.
Ms. Ammons, I'm going to give you a follow-up.
Thank you. I'd like to make a motion, actually, for separation of those two items. I move separating those two items to consider the selection of the top three firms, discussion separate from the action that the county board would do, and when that plan will be taking place. So, my motion is to separate those two items separately for discussion on them separately, and I so moved.
There's a motion on the floor to separate the shortlisting from the remainder of the motion discussion. Seeing none, all those in favor of the motion to separate signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the same?
Aye.
Motion carries. The motion on the floor was to separate, so we now need a motion with regard to how we're going to handle who's who on the list. Ms. Petrie?
Point of order, I believe my motion is still on the floor as a divided question.
I would agree.
Yeah.
Yes, she did.
Okay, I think you're right.
So, I guess the first half of the motion would be, take the top three, and for interviews on the 26th, and the second half of the motion would be- And the second half of the motion would be, schedule a special county board meeting for the Cal. Number Two date to include only the selection of vendor as a county board item, and to include other Cal. Business.
Your point well taken. I agree with you. So, it is now the, do you care what your order?
I don't care.
Okay. It is, the motion on the floor is the top three, discussion on the top three. Ms. Petrie.
Well, the fact completely of just the top three seems to cut down our discussion tremendously, and I would like the discussion opened up, that it might be the top five. And I, well, yes, okay. I amend the motion that the consideration be expanded to at least the top five.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Ammons. Discussion on the motion to make it the top five rather than the top three. Mr. Langenheim.
I'm afraid at least the top five would be the top five.
I'll assume she means five unless she says otherwise. Mr. Alex.
With all honesty, I could not find five that were acceptable to me.
Mr. O'Connor. Mr. O'Connor, did you have your hand up?
I was trying to say.
Okay. I'm sorry.
I'd just like to respond.
Sorry. The top five, is that based on the total score or the ranking? Because there's a couple different things on this sheet, if this is what we're going off of, straight off the total score.
Ms. Petrie, clarify your motion. Do you mean ranking or score?
Point of information?
It's a difference.
Tom, could you clarify how the evaluators ranked the firm of top three picks?
There were nine evaluators. So, in addition to compiling the total numbers for each firm, that second box tells you how many times of those nine evaluators, how many of them had each of these firms in their top three. So, ILPP was in the top three for three evaluators, Carter Gobleley for three, and so on.
It doesn't say where they weren't in the top, it just that they were in the top.
They were in the evaluator's top three. It's just a different way of looking at numbers.
And I return to my question. Ms. Petrie, do you want it to be a raw score or the bottom score?
Be a what?
No, it does not.
I'm sorry, go ahead.
Do you want it to be based on the total score, or do you want it to be based on the ranking?
On the ranking.
Okay. That's clear.
Point of order, there are six.
Understand.
That's inconsistent with the naming of five.
It's her motion. Mr. Kibler.
I'm going to pass for it.
Okay. Mr. Quisenberry.
I guess I would, I would have to question the ability of this body to evaluate six in one single night. So, I think we would have to also look at adjusting the schedule. That was part of the original motion. I would, I would go on to say that there, in the scoring methodology, there are a couple that stand out, and I would agree with that. But beyond those couple, it gets pretty muddy once you go down there, down lower. So, I think when we open the door to four, or five, or six, we're looking at trying to evaluate it as a group, the whole, the whole batch. And I don't think we should go there. I think we had a committee with, with people on it that were giving us recommendations, and we should, we should use those.
Anyone who hasn't spoke yet, Mr. Moser.
I don't know how many of these we've sat through in the last 20 years, Tom. Five is too many, and three makes a long night. And it's very difficult to go past three with a clear perception of where you want to end up.
Mr. Carter?
Yeah. We could solve this by not any at all. I don't know why we keep on going down this jail out building route. We had people that come here and plead to you. They don't want you in jail. But we seem to be falling on, I don't know, we're not listening. And I just can't see, as a Democrat Party, why we are doing this. Unhuman, we know that. We've been doing this for 40 years, and they haven't solved one crime. And you know what you can do. It's alternative for this, if you would do it. But you don't want to do it, you want, you want to make money off human suffering. And to me, the good Lord is not going to bless you. I want to tell you. You see where things going now? Our country is falling and the whole. It's ridiculous. And I'd be, you know, I just can't see you keep on sending these young people to jail because we're not educating them. We not train them to be good citizens. Won't give the parents what they need to teach them to be good citizens. No program. So, I'm just not for any of this. You wasting my time, Chris.
Mr. Kibler.
I would like to ask Ms. Ammons, and maybe the Sheriff, too. Given the top five or the top three, and all the comments we've heard from the public, and you've read in detail, great detail, these reports, do you feel that the top three or the top five gives the type of information that you would be seeking, you know, since you've been appointed to this group? So, can you give some clarification on where you think on the top three versus top five?
Sheriff Walsh, do you wish to address that? You're not the only person who's evaluated these folks, but you're perfectly welcome. Got to record everything?
I don't know that it makes a huge difference, but it's an awful lot to absorb if you haven't looked at this. I'll tell you how, how I went about it, and maybe this will give you an idea. I literally read three of them, and I didn't think about how I would score them at all, just because I wanted to get a flavor, how they were, what they were all talking about. And there wasn't a huge difference. I mean, there was with a couple that ended up at the bottom, but whether you could do three or five, I think their approaches, to some extent, are similar. Then I went back through, and then I started looking at the individual criteria that appear on the rating sheet, like, you know, how we score them in the different, in the different categories. I honestly don't think there's a big difference. I think Mr. Moser raises a great point. I did this, literally, two full days of just sitting there, making myself read this stuff. And if you get five presentations, I think it's going to be hard to differentiate for what that's worth.
Mr. Jay?
I asked for both.
I'm doing with people who haven't had a chance to talk.
He asked me the same question.
Specifically, if she could also comment.
Oh, sure. I'm sorry, Carol.
Thank you. I'll just give the quick minority report right quick. And I have to, in good conflict, in good interest of my own character, say that when I reviewed them all, I agree that there was little difference between most of them. The only one that was different was the one who was not a builder, which was just a consulting firm that simply did analysis, which is ILPP, whatever that stands for. They were the only company that didn't have a conflict of interest, in my opinion, that would recommend build, because we build. Everybody else is a large builder and have built, most of their presentation was how, look how shiny our buildings are, and this is what we've built. So, I'm not a professional, I'm a layperson, that's how I read them. I also scored them based on the large volume of jails that they've built. And I didn't see in one proposal very much at all about the overall, the overarching part the RFP asked for, is the complete analysis of the criminal justice system. I didn't see that in most of the reports. It was very glossed over. Most of them really touted how much they, how much they built, the institutions they've built was the biggest part. A lot of them had a lot of huge prison projects under their belts, they did. And so, to me, a classic conflict of interest are those who are these large builders who's, that's what they specialize in building. So, I wouldn't expect that the builder would say, "Don't build." The other thing is that Mr. Maxwell raised a point a few months ago, is where's the money in the current budget for the needs analysis that we're asking for in the first place? The other thing I wrote was that the, the part that we asked for in the process for the ranking of these, I think was a little skewed, because I wasn't, when I came tonight, I hadn't seen this paper. And to see Kimmy &amp; Associates ranked extremely high should raise some eyebrows, because a few months ago, in public participation, one of the citizens presented that there was already discussion about Kimmy &amp; Associates already, and they were already being consulted. So, I, as a board member, would find that to be a serious conflict of interest, that they ranked so high in this presentation. I think also, the final thing is that the other board members, a lot of the Republican caucus hasn't seen this proposal. The eight proposals were not hard to read. They were quite easy, and they were pretty systematic once you start reading them. And so, it was only eight proposals. The committees haven't read them. I think there needs to be a broader discussion on this issue before we move to July 10th meeting, selecting a firm and paying money, that we haven't even figured out what that is yet. So, I think the board needs to ask more questions than what's being presented right now.
Mr. Jay.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Well, I was one of the fortunate ones that got to go through all of that, and it was, it was a lot like Carol said. It was, at first, it looked overwhelming, but when you got into it, there was a lot of information that was similar to each other. But I can tell you that three proposals is God's plenty to go over at a time, and that we need, if we're going to limit it, I thought that was the purpose of this committee, was to get it down to a manageable size. And that's what we've tried to do. Three is a manageable size, five is not a manageable size. So, eat your own poison. If you want to poison yourself, go for it.
Mr. Alex.
I feel like I should put some flasher on my earlier comment that I couldn't find five that I liked. I think a number of Ms. Ammons' comments are extremely to the point. At one point, when we were preparing the RFP, I talked briefly to Daryl Cruz, and he expressed concern that the RFPs didn't, the RFP didn't essentially mandate that the vendor provide public engagement in the process. And I took that to Deb and to the sheriff, and they said, "Well, we kind of did that on purpose, because we want to give the vendor the opportunity to tell us what they, what they think they should do." And frankly, I think that was probably one of the most valuable aspects of this RFP, because I think a number of vendors got enough rope to hang themselves. There were a number of vendors who I was extremely disappointed, didn't pick up on some of the aspects of the RFP in terms of the Community Justice Task Force, in terms of public engagement, and I rejected a couple of them, essentially out of hand based on that. A couple of them did not appear to be familiar with the situation here in Champaign County. Anything from, you know, talking about district attorneys instead of state's attorneys, and talking about solving our overcrowding problem, talking about solving problems that we don't have, and not necessarily addressing problems that we do. They seemed sort of like one-size-fits-all proposals that didn't indicate to me that they'd given a whole lot of thought to our particular, the particulars of the RFP. Of the three that were the highest, that happened to be the highest scored by the project planning team, I did, one thing I appreciated about the proposal from Kimmy &amp; Associates was that although they are proposing to partner with an outside architect and engineer, those architect, those, that architect and engineer are general-purpose architect and engineering firms, they're not correctional-specific, which, to some extent, I think gets away from this idea, we're just, we're just a company that builds prisons. They did have a resume of Dr. Martin, who did have specific experience in the RFP, specific experience in her resume, essentially with regard to justice policy and sentencing alternatives and so forth. And I felt that the Kimmy proposal was perhaps one of the least facility-specific proposals, and I appreciated that. DLZ, which I believe was the second-ranked firm by the planning team, which I, I didn't know what the rankings were until tonight, they struck me, on the other hand, as very design-oriented. They are an architecture and project management firm. They have an in-house criminal justice specialist, a Mr. Downing, who talks about comprehensive justice system analysis. But when I looked at the actual projects that were cited in his resume as his experience, they all appeared to be facility, correctional facility-based. And they did not mention the task force or public engagement to a great extent. The third one who was listed, JSG, I thought gave a good summary, I liked the fact that they gave a good summary of alternatives. They indicated that they considered alternate secure housing types, there was some discussion of reincarceration. They indicated that they would want to be highly involved with the planning team and with the task force. They did have a local presence, Mr. Millen, however, my understanding is that Mr. Millen is an architect rather than a justice or corrections expert. However, they did cite a, Mr. Ryan, who had a pretty impressive resume, in my mind, in terms of alternatives to incarceration, experience with a task force in Rhode Island on racial disparity, worked with the Office of Justice Programs at the DOJ on drug courts, and was a probation section manager in the DOJ for a while. So, again, somebody who I thought, assuming that they use him accurately, could give us some access to the information that we're seeking in terms of, I want to get benefit out of some, if we bring somebody in from outside, I want to get benefit from the fact that they have seen many other jurisdictions, and specifically looking at these alternatives to incarceration and process improvements. And I think a number of the vendors did, did get to that. Frankly, outside of those top three, and I'm not crazy about number two, because, as I said, they appear to be much more on the, on the facility design side and less on the overall process side. I did, I do agree that ILPP had an interesting proposal, because not being related to an architect, not, you know, sort of staying away from the architecture side more, might give us some more unique solutions. On the other hand, I was pretty disappointed in that, that their proposal didn't go very much in-depth in terms of public engagement, in terms of how they'd interact with the, with the, the planning team or with the Community Justice Task Force. So, I guess, I mean, I am not opposed to interviewing more than three firms, but it was, like I said, it was, it would have been hard for me to come up with three that I thought had the appropriate mix of architecture and facilities expertise that's needed to evaluate the downtown jail and the satellite jail, and, you know, look at this from a facility standpoint, and the justice policy and administration of justice background to be able to look at the justice system as a whole and answer some of the, some of the overarching questions. So, I'm, I'm happy to sit through as many interviews as we want to do, but I would like to, I guess I'd like to hear specifics as to why there are more than three on this list that we feel would be acceptable based on their submissions to the RFP.
Ms. Petrie.
Okay. I'll go through my analysis. I've read all of, all of them, and I read them in a certain way, because I was looking for certain aspects. One aspect was how they were going to work with the community, another aspect was looking at the makeup of their staffs. I looked at some of the time frameworks that they laid out for their, their work, and looked at some of the jobs that they have done. And only one, to me, that I read was not boilerplate. I've read a lot of proposals in my time at the university, and these were just cranked up boilerplate without individualizing them to this, to this community, which always, to me, raises a red flag. me, raises a red flag. Most of the consulting firms have same type of staff. There are structural engineers, there are architects, there's very little interdisciplinary aspects to the staff makeup. And if the purpose of part one of what we're trying to do is to look at the gestalt of the jail issue and community justice, we need a consulting firm that is very interdisciplinary and can look at many different aspects. The only one that brought that to the table is ILPP, and they say straight up in their packet that they aren't, they aren't gaming for part two of this, and that is building a facility. All of the others, if you really analyze a number of pages and, and do a content analysis, they are all pitching for the job. They're not really pitching for getting a good needs analysis for what we are facing here in the community, and I found that extremely troubling, that I figure this, this project is probably $150,000 to $200,000 as, as a guestman and looking at some of the time frameworks. And the time frameworks range, which also troubled me, because to do what is proposed in some of the time frameworks and the amount of time they've laid out, they're just cranking in and doing quick stakeholder interviews. There is no effort to engage the community, there's no effort to do any broad-based surveying, there's no effort to even do something simple like Survey Monkey and get a real feel of what are the needs of the community, what is the attitude of the community, potentially it could build rapport with the community, in fact, if we have to go and ask for some more money to do this jail project. None of that is in, in any of these. I could go on. So it's for those arguments that just taking the top three as the sole final presentation upon which we make the judgment of choosing one troubles me no end, because out of the boilerplate presentations, we really have no idea of what these companies are like. And until we have a chance to talk to more than just three of them, we will never know if they will service our, service us well and serve our community. This is a 30-to-50-year project down the line, and a very expensive one, and it's short-sighted for us to cut ourselves off with the top three. And it troubles me terrifically to look at the gap between the Kimmy score of 919 and the JCO score of 682. That alone tells me an awful lot as to how the evaluation was designed. This evaluation was not designed so that one could go through, there, there were nine sections in Roman numeral seven of the proposal, and this evaluation should have been set up so the project team could have evaluated each one of those sections and scored that as to how well they thought the presentation in the RFP submission would fill what is being asked in the proposal that was put out. Thank you.
Ms. Anderson? Do you have your hand up?
I read through all of them, and I have to confess that I, well, I tried to look at overall and their staff, and I was interested in what they said about alternatives like mental health services and substance abuse. And one of the things that bothered me about the DLZ, their whole staff was all mechanical engineering and architects, and they really didn't have anyone with the background to look at the alternatives particularly, and they never mentioned mental health or substance abuse. And they didn't seem to know that the county board was involved. They talked about county executives. Kimmy, I, was one of my top three. I did think that they had put together people who could look at alternatives, and they didn't have, they're being Champaign-based, they know something about the community to start with, and they were attempting, I think, to kind of look at overall. I, there were, I did like ILPP because I felt that they probably could look at that area really strongly, but I felt like they probably do, they, they did mention special needs, so I'm not sure exactly what all they include in that. I think it's difficult to go beyond three. You get to five, it's maybe four, might be a possibility, but it's, it's really difficult to know, and I, I agree with Mike Pancy, the way they put their staff together says something about what they're, they're going to look at. If you do go to five, there are three threes, how do you pick five? Yeah, that's pretty much what I was going to say.
You haven't sent them yet?
And I think part of this is the problem of this form of evaluation, because if they had gotten together to discuss the evaluation before shortlisting, the fact that there is only one that isn't tied to an architectural firm might have meant that you would have wanted to interview that one. But with this form of scoring, it doesn't happen. But I, I want to get out of this cheap. I think a lot of us want to get out of this cheap. We would like somebody who thinks outside the box. And if all were, even if we take the top five, we're really interviewing five jail architects, and we're going to keep out the people that would find alternatives that are cheaper. And I think what we should be looking at, at least at this point, is what are the cheapest alternatives? How can we make the most of what we have? And how can we find alternatives to building a lot more? So I, I don't like three, I don't like five, I'd like to see ILPP just because a lot of us here, I think, would agree that they should be interviewed.
Okay. I, I know Mr. Kibler's been waiting for a second, second round, but I'm going to comment because I think we might be able to get out of here before 11:30 if we do something. I'm going to share with you that I am very familiar with ILPP. I spent an entire week with them in Denver last summer. I am very impressed by them, and I agree with what Carol said, I agree with every, what everyone said, that they don't have the same orientation, the same desire automatically to build, that that came through when I was dealing with them and Ms. Bucy and the sheriff were dealing with them last summer. So they do have a degree of independence that is very different in some respects to the other. And what I'm picking up from Astrid, from Jan, from Mr. Alex, from Mr. Quisenberry, from Ms. Ammons, and from Ms. Petrie, and Mr. James, and Mr. Kurtz, have also, they want to interview ILPP. It seems to me better, rather than go with five, why don't we go with three and put ILPP in there and resolve this? Would that be an acceptable way to deal with it, as a substitute motion by someone? Mr. Kurtz?
I would like to make that substitute motion.
I would second that.
And that was seconded by Ms., Mr. Quisenberry, Ms. Ammons.
I would like to actually, I, I agree that putting them in would help this process along, but the second part, I'd like to amend that substitute motion. I would. That's right. I brought my computer for this. No, I, I, no, seriously, I do want to amend that substitute motion because of this, that once we, we've identified three, that the board members would have access to those three companies, those who have not, for that matter, those three companies, or four companies packets, so that they could review all of them and be prepared for intelligent discussion. Yes?
I would consider friendly. How many packets are out there right now before we do this?
There's a box right over there, I brought it back.
Okay.
Who has not had a chance to review material? One, two, three, four.
Okay, we've got plenty of material, don't leave tonight without taking a package. Okay, the substitute motion is to do the top three with the fourth being ILPP, and that every board member have access to reviewing all of the materials this evening. Discussion on the substitute, Mr. Quisenberry.
At this point, when we have selected four, is there any reason why that information wouldn't be made public? Because it's going to be an open meeting.
Under the Freedom of Information Act, and, and there's a good reason for that, primarily because you really don't want your four vendors reading each other's materials before they present to you. And the Freedom of Information Act protects all information that you receive in a competitive process like this until a contract is awarded. I would encourage you to use that and to maintain this only for county board members' information at this point.
Further discussion?
Point of order, Mr. Betts. I believe you have to have a vote to make the substitute motion the active vote on the floor, you've not done that yet.
I, I know that, he made the motion a substitute.
But if you can't discuss the motion till it's actually on the floor.
I thought he, Mr. Kurtz, he didn't?
He moved to make the, he moved it to have substitute motion, you have to vote on the motion to bring it to the floor.
I'm sorry, it's getting late. What was your motion, Carol?
My motion is that the top four firms that are selected out of this here process, all four of those packets be made available to all the county board members prior to any discussion with this item.
Discussion.
No, that was a friendly amendment.
Mr. Kurtz's motion.
Mr. Kurtz made the motion. You made the motion.
That's correct.
To use the top three firms and ILPP.
That's right. If you need a vote out there, make that the main motion.
I'll do my best, I'll do my best, Tom. We're on the first half, we're on the first half of my motion to take the top three. There was an amendment made by Ms. Petrie to take the top five that was then substituted by Mr. Kurtz to take the top three plus ILPP, which was then amended by Ms. Petrie.
That, point of order, that's mistaken there, because you have, you don't have substitute motion, you have to vote on it, you have to bring that to the floor. You can't just say, "I'm going to substitute," you have to vote on it.
Okay, I know what you said. All those in favor of substitution, am I correct, Pius? Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries. Now we're to the substantive motion. Thank you, Pius. I think you should be both chair and presidentarian. I want to be replaced. Go ahead, Mr. Kurtz, and address the substance of the motion.
Well, I agree that the first three should be part of the interview process, and I, I see that those who have read pretty much all of the RFPs, many of them, there's a consensus of ILPP having that less than any kind of conflict of interest, and had what I felt a very substantive background in criminal justice and those things that many, many of the public participation have discussed with us, and I think that ILPP would be a fine addition to the three, and certainly Carol's substitute amendment about getting out all the information on those four to those who haven't read it would be certainly the way to go.
Any further discussion on the substantive? Yes, Mr. Alex.
Yes, I would just add, and I, you know, other board members, please speak up if they feel that there is a proposal that was substantially responsive, that met all of our, could meet all of our needs, that is being left out by only taking the top three and ILPP, because my, based on my reading, I had serious problems with all of the ones that are being left behind.
Ms. Petrie.
Well, I, I accept that invitation from Mr. Alex, and a company, Carter Globely from South Carolina, certainly offered us some aspects that percolated them up to not the very top of my list, but within the top cluster of my list, and people should take them into consideration.
Ms. Michaels.
I'm pretty loud usually. I just, this might be kind of...
This is what it's going to be like when we're interviewing all four of these people.
Backing it up, yeah, here's, here's the thing. If you have not had a chance to read all of them, it's awfully hard to vote on this.
Yeah.
To say, two, three, four, five, whatever it is, or however many it is. So we're kind of walking around all of this when really, some of us, I know I don't, have the be-all to end-all. Now, you know, do I trust my fellow county board members to, you know, have a good idea of what's on here? Yes, I do, but at the same time, here we're voting on something to add an odd one that doesn't match up with this number to that number, and I just think we're discussing something before everybody has read all the information. That's my opinion.
Mr. Kibler.
So, so I'm sorry, we're kind of contradictory. I would say the purpose of this group was to, to read all of it and report back, and I think those in the board that have provided back information, whether it be from those in the board or the panel, honestly, I don't need to see eight proposals, I don't need to see four. I think in the beginning, to have three people come up, give us their pitch, give us their presentation, and if we don't like them, we just throw them out and bring in the next three. I think bringing in a fourth, bringing in four groups to, two Tuesdays from now is kind of overkill. Start with three, work with those, and if they don't work, throw them out. And I would say the three that you would choose would be Kimmy, DLZ, and ILPP, because people have said ILPP is what they want to see, so let's see it. That's what I would like to do, as opposed to having everybody go through the proposals, because we're going to end up in the exact same spot. So you might as well get some people here first, and then decide if we need to bring in more later.
The motion on the floor is what we should be addressing. Address the motion, Carol.
Come back to me.
Okay. Anyone wish to address the motion on the floor, which is that we would be interviewing the top three plus ILPP, with each member getting advanced copies of their RFPs? That's the motion on the floor. Any further discussion on that motion? All those in favors signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the same?
Aye.
Motion carries. Next part of the motion, Mr. Alex, is yours.
I'm correct. I believe that that motion was to hold a special county board meeting on July 10th, the regular COW number-two date, for the purpose of selecting a vendor after, based on the information we receive on the 26th, and to conduct other COW business as deemed appropriate.
Is there, there was a second already to that? It would be discussion on that motion and only that motion. Ms. Ammons.
I will not support that motion. One is, it, it precludes that the board is going to accept any of the proposals. The RFP says very clearly that we could do this process and not select any vendor. We don't have to, we could reissue the RFP, we can decide to just fix the plumbing, we can do whatever we want to at this point. So to set that in motion as if that is the hard-line date that we have to select a firm, I don't think we should do that. I think we need to allow the other members to look at the four that the small group have looked at, and then come back and decide what the board wants to do at a committee of the whole.
The chair is going to make the comment. The board is never bound to select anyone that is not in our rules. We are not bound at that meeting to select, we can reject them all, we can select one, we can continue and have another session, we're not bound by that motion to select anyone. Ms. Petrie.
Simply an information question. If I read the materials correctly, when these submissions were sent in, there was a sealed cost estimate for what was being proposed, is that accurate information?
That's correct.
And then when does that information get revealed to the board so the board will have a chance to wrestle with the reality check of the cost?
The cost proposals pursuant to the RFP can be opened after the board has determined who the top-ranked firms to be interviewed are. So those can be opened tomorrow and shared... So those can be opened tomorrow and shared with the board. The other thing that would happen between tomorrow and June 26th is that reference checks would be done on these four firms and that information would also then be available to you on the 26th.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
Mr. Quisenberry.
Yes, I, I am supportive of the schedule as proposed by Mr. Alex. But I would say that I, I kind of feel like this is an item that we should address in that meeting as, as a COW and let it go on to the full board meeting in July so that it has that regular committee discussion and selection and then a validation at a full county board meeting just for the purpose of providing additional opportunity for the public to say their piece.
There's one additional advantage to that, and that is, at that point, you, you will know what the cost is. You will have to approve a budget amendment to enter into this contract so that you would have the opportunity at the July 10th COW to take both of those actions. If that's what you intend to do, and then it would be formalized at the board meeting.
So then with, with that advice, I would, I'd move to amend the schedule to, in Mr. Alex's original proposal, to have a special meeting, well, have a COW meeting on July 10th to address the potential selection of a, of a winner in the RFP. And then let, and that's all we would do, we would send it on the full county board if we did so.
You might also, on that night, want to approve a, we might want to put a budget amendment on the finance agenda to address whatever decision you make, to also go forward to the full board.
I will, I will allow that adjustment to my proposed amendment and await a second.
Seconded by Ms. Kurtz.
I'm sorry, if I could have a clarification, how would we know what the budget was going to be before we selected a vendor?
You won't. But you, we can prepare a budget amendment for you to consider that evening, and we can put a number in there, and you can vote on the budget amendment after you've determined what you're going to do here. You can always amend the number when you're still at committee to forward it to the county board.
Okay.
Everyone understand what Mr. Quisenberry's motion is?
Restate, please.
Would you restate it, Mr. Quisenberry?
I'd be, I'd be glad to restate it. When amended, Mr. Alex's motion that we consider this on July 10th would be as the committee of the whole. And that we would also consider a budget amendment at that time in order to allow us to confirm our choice and actually vote on the budget amendment at the full county board meeting in July.
And the full county board meeting is... Ms. Petrie.
Okay, clarification question on his amendment. And that is, so we have these interviews on the 26th of June, and we throw the towel in and say, none of these are working for us, and we either need to bring in some more, whatever path we take. If we pass this motion, are we committed to this now that it's on the public record? Or do we have the time in between to change this?
One, there is no decision on the 26th. We always have, as a board, the chair, Mr. Wyble, has the authority to remove items from the agenda if need be. And we're never bound, we can always say, if we don't select any, one, there's no reason to have a meeting.
I'd like to suggest that the action that we could take on the 10th might be to decide to interview additional firms.
It certainly could, it's wide open. Discussion, any further discussion on Mr. Quisenberry's amendment? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed the same?
Aye.
Motion carries. We're back to the main motion that Mr. Alex proposed and had seconded. Would you like to speak to your motion?
Yes, just, I'd like to say what my motion is. As I understand it, my motion is down to, we will have a COW meeting on July 10th.
And we will have a COW.
Am I correct? I mean, that's all we're, that's all we're binding the board to by that motion.
Why do we need a motion?
Okay. All those in favor of the main motion as amendment? Go ahead.
I think what you're doing here is clarifying, typically, in an RFP process like this, you make a decision the same night that you have the presentations. And what you're saying here is that you will have the presentations on June 26th and will not make a decision subject to those presentations until the July 10th COW meeting. So it's somewhat of a process decision you're making about how to move forward with this RFP process. Is that correct?
That is correct, thank you, you said it better than I did.
That being said, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed the same?
Aye.
Motion carries nonetheless. Nothing further? Mr. Chairman? He's going to call the closed session.
No.
That doesn't require a motion, does it?
I thought we were going to discuss.
Well, I guess, Ms. Petrie, what is your question, I guess? Please be quiet over there, leave room.
I, I have, I have several questions on this procedure. And I, I thought it was here so we could firm it up.
Go ahead, Tom, if you have questions, go ahead.
Okay. For the Q and A, is there some chosen people who are going to determine X number of questions? So the questions are consistent across the board for the three consulting firms that will be invited to come to be interviewed?
That has typically not been done. That's, that's a decision, you know. Typically, board members ask questions. Our only direction is that if you are going to ask a question of the presenters, that you be consistent and probably make sure that the same questions are covered with each presenter.
Okay, then, may I make a suggestion, since this seems to be just open, that there is a, a schedule of questions that are asked of each consulting firm. And then we have five minutes of open-ended questions so that board members can ask more in depth or ask for more information that maybe isn't covered by the, the scheduled number of questions.
If that's how the board wants to do it, that's fine.
And then I have one other aspect. You have a list of interviewers here. In the public participation this evening, it was suggested by several people and one member of the Community Justice Task Force that a chosen representative of that task force be included as part of the interviewers.
Well, we already have a member of that just, that task force sitting in this room, Mr. Richards. So I don't understand the nature of that comment. How much redundancy do we need?
Maybe Mr. Richards could discuss it with his task force then.
Mr. Alex.
I guess I would also point out that the interviews are not a closed meeting. I mean, the interviews will be held in an open meeting at which no action will be taken. And my whole point in wanting to drag this out even farther by having a COW, having a COW meeting and/or a special meeting was to allow anyone, including who's present at the interviews, including presumably members of the Community Justice Task Force, to speak to county board members about what they heard during the interview process and what they feel our, our choice should be. So I think we're, I mean, it's, I think it's almost a moot point. I would certainly hope that as many members of the task force as possible would attend the interviews.
Ms. Ammons.
Actually, thank you, Mr. Alex. I actually like to formalize that process. I'd like to make a motion that a member of the, what is this, Community Justice Task Force, other than the county board representative, be added to the questioning phase of the shortlisted interview procedures, and I so move.
There's a motion on the floor, speak to the motion.
I will speak to that. One of the things that I've done and experienced since I've been on the county board is, this, this board usually takes the expert advice of the experts when they walk in the room. And they're not usually, we've, we've been told over and over again that we're not nursing home providers or administrators, we don't know anything about that, so we can't give good advice in these areas, that's why we hire the experts. Well, we've put together an expert team as a subgroup of the county board, like the nursing home board is, who's giving us advice on what we should do with our nursing home. In this case, we have a team that is put together to give us expert advice, and therefore you selected experts to be on that team, and then to not include those experts in this process, for which most of us are not experts on, would be useless to have the committee. I think we have already set precedence that we are doing a very bad job, including more than just the county board in this process. And I think the more the attempts are to close out those people that you selected by right of the county board, selected as a subgroup of the county board to give us advice and not include them, really sends the wrong message. And I believe that we should have at least one person who is selected from that committee, and Mr. Richards would know who that person is, to be a part of the interview process based on their expertise.
My question to this would, with that committee, would they not have a chair? And wouldn't that be the responsibility, the chair, to come with the questions and be the person to represent that committee?
The chair is already a county board member and not an expert. He is the convener of the meeting.
I'm going to vote against this, because I would suggest that Mr. Richards can represent the committee. And based on experience, I believe Ms. Ammons, who is also going to be part of the questioning group, can represent those interests.
Further discussion, there's a motion on the floor, Mr. Alex.
I'll vote for it, because it's an open meeting anyway. I mean, I don't see any reason not to have one or two questions from members of the task force if we think it's going to help.
Keeping in mind that there's very little time available to board members to ask questions in this process, and I will tell you, I totally object to the idea of having the outside people do this, because that is not in the charter for which they were appointed, period. We have not amended the charter, this is a big mistake to do this. I am absolutely opposed to it, because there's going to be a lot of board members as a result of this that are never going to be able to ask a question if we're going to guarantee two or three questions to these folks. That's a big problem. The reality is, it does not take an expert to select these. All of us that have looked through these documents know it doesn't take an expert. It's a value judgment, in terms of, do they have experience, do they not have experience? What are you personally looking for in terms of their analysis and their approach to this particular project? Are they local, which is one of the reasons I think one of them had much higher standing? Do they, do they not want to be involved in bidding on the architecture? That's a value judgment, that does not require an expert. If it requires an expert to make this selection, then none of us really should be making this selection at all. It does not require expertise. Mr. Richards.
I'm going to vote for this. I'm happy to bring any questions from any task force members to, to this meeting, but it's going to be hard to have questions in advance, because they haven't been able to be a part of the RFP process. But I'm, I, I think we should have this process be as open as possible. So I'm, I'm happy to vote for this. We'll, we'll have to figure out how we would bring somebody in. And of course, ultimately, this is a county board process. But we can, we can definitely enrich things by asking, allowing experts in the, in the field to, to ask questions and join the discussion.
Further discussion on the main motion. Mr. Carter.
You know, it's kind of our life. We've been high in these specials even since I've been on this board. And I don't know, seem to be, we always told, oh, this is sufficient for you. Yeah, get this back. But it's, it's funny, 15 to 20 years, we come right back and need those same special I told you to tell us again. So to me, they can't tell me nothing that I don't know. Already know what's going on. When we build the other jail, we had to spend, well, this is going to be sufficient for you. And we rep, beating them same advices again and paying them the money. Now, come on, gentlemen. This, this is nothing but a trick 22, you call it, or whatever they'll do. Fricking the sack you find, that's all you're doing, because these, they're going to tell you the same thing. You'll be back here when I'm gone. My tenure here is getting short. I'm getting the ages now where I know I won't be here long, you know. And I'm preparing myself to exit all I get. Leave it to you, I'll be right here giving you same expert, telling you this crap and you paying them for it. By the time you waking up and being smart, when you feel this danger, 20 years from now, you be saying, all right, right here, by getting that, take out a million of them. This is sad, you guys, you need to wake up.
There's a motion on the floor, speaking to the motion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed the same?
Aye.
The motion fails. I think Mr. Wyble, we're ready for you to take over.
Thanks, Mr. Betts.
Mr. O'Connor.
Before we leave facilities, I would respectfully request the chairman's permission to call the coroner in the morning, tell him to quit yapping about a freezer and just bring them in here, they'll last for weeks.
You have both chairs' permission.
Okay, we have one item on our other business, Mr. Alex.
Mr. Chair, I move we enter, I move that we enter into executive session pursuant to five ILCS 120 slash 2C11 to consider litigation which is probable or imminent against Champaign County. I further move that following individuals remain present, county's legal counsel, the county administrator, and recording secretary.
So second, Dr. Mitchell, roll call, please.
Langenhut.
Yes, say yes.
Michaels? Michaels? Mitchell?
Yes.
Moser? O'Connor?
Yes.
Petrie?
Yes.
Quisenberry?
Yes.
Richards?
Richards?
Yes.
Rosales?
Yes.
Schrader?
No.
Wyble? Alex? Ammons? Anderson?
Yes.
Benzel?
Yes.
Burksen?
Yes.
Betts?
Yes.
Carter? Esri?
Yes.
Holderfield? James?
No.
Jay?
Yes.
Kibler?
Yes.
Kurtz? Kurtz?
Yes.
Wyble?